Now that we got the only technical glitch out of the way, welcome to the District of Squamish Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, November 24th, 2020. I am councillor Armin Hurford and as acting mayor, I'll be chairing this meeting. Welcome as always to the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Moved by councillor French, second by councillor Stoner. All those in favor? Motion carries. Ministerial Order M192. So pursuant to Ministerial Order Number M192, the District of Squamish is excluding in-person public attendance at this November 24th, 2020 meeting on the basis that full public attendance in a manner consistent with public health orders and recommendations cannot be accommodated at this time. The district is ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability at this meeting by the following means. This meeting is being livestreamed. A video of this meeting will be available on the district's website for viewing on an on-demand basis. Can I get a mover, please? Moved by councillor Stoner, second by councillor French. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Motion carries. Thank you. And council? So the council members attending the meeting electronically are required to advise the chair the chair of the meeting of the following circumstances. When a council member disconnects and or reconnects or enters or exits the meeting, so that this can be recorded in the minutes of the meeting. Council members are to identify themselves when they advise the chair that they wish to be placed on the speakers list. With respect to a vote, council members are only required to state a nay vote. No statement is required if the member is in favor. Council members shall put the telephone or computer on mute unless they wish to speak. Council members shall be involved in and participate in the meeting. Council members shall text the chief administrative officer or the corporate officer if they have technical difficulty with their telephone or computer. The meeting shall be recessed for up to 10 minutes if a technical difficulty occurs on the district side, which results in the council member being unable to connect to this meeting. Moving on to our first border of business. Item 4.1, the future methodology and approaches for sector impact studies from our Economic Development Officer, Kate Mulligan. Take your way, Ms. Mulligan.
Good morning, Chair, Mayor, and Council. My name is Catherine Mulligan. I'm the Economic Development Officer for the District of Squamish. Today, I'll be joined by Derek DeBassio. He's the Principal for Crane Management and Consultants, and he was also the report writer for the the Future Methodology and Approach for Sector Impact Studies. Just bear with me, I'm just going to share my screen and start the presentation. And I assume everybody's able to see the presentation? Okay?
Yep, looks good.
Excellent, wonderful. So the objective today is to present to council proposed method proposed approaches and methodologies for economic impact measurement and considerations for social impact measurement for identified Squamish priority sectors. Crane Management, as I mentioned, with Pacific Analytics, were contracted in 2020 to research and propose approaches and methodologies to estimate the economic impact and identify and describe competitive dynamics for priority sectors, as well as complete the Tourism Impact Study, which was presented and endorsed by council, was presented to council in 2020 and endorsed thereafter. Just as a refresher, I thought I would pop up on the screen, the sector ecosystem. So this is the sector ecosystem that was endorsed by council in 2019. It includes core enabling sectors as well as more nascent themes that are for development, such as the green economy, which includes renewable energy, clean tech, construction, efficient tech, green building, and agrofoods.
Miss Mulligan, I'll just stop you there for a quick second. We're seeing a little alert from your to join this meeting, so thank you for joining us without needing your alert. You might want to snooze that before or before, it's not blocking anything yet, but I just foresee it in the, there you go. Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, so into the presentation, I didn't notice.
No, that's, that's fine. I just didn't want it to block something important as we move through this. Thank you.
Okay, absolutely. So, and then the outdoor recreation theme encompasses recreation and performance apparel, sporting tech, adventure-based media, marketing, and film. So when developing the approaches for measurement, considerations included that priority sectors and themes for measurement did not necessarily align with traditional sector definitions that are used for the purposes of measurement. In particular, if you think about the way that Statistics Canada groups, sectors, and subsectors within, our priority sectors aren't necessarily perfectly aligned, and that is the case often with how communities will define their local level priority sectors. Also, emerging thematic areas are not necessarily mutually exclusive to other core and enabling sectors. So for instance, the green economy includes green building, which also includes value-added wood products. So there's definitely an interrelation ship between the emerging thematic areas, core and enabling sectors, and interdependencies that are taken into account. And we also thought about existing studies that already provided impact assessments. So for instance, if you look at transportation as a core sector, in 2016, the Squamish Terminals conducted a impact study thereby sizing the value or the contribution to our local economy beyond. And then we also thought about what sectors maybe had one predominant employer. So for instance, in terms of higher or treated education, you know, thinking that we have generally one higher education institute operating within Squamish, which is Quest. So not really looking at completing studies where there's one employer. So the report itself include the following detailed considerations. It provided an overview of methodologies that could be employed. It provided a study design or study design considerations, including the study area, methods for data sourcing, as well as research plans. It also provided consideration for analysis of sector dynamics, which I'll get into further with the presentation. But to provide an overview of what economic impact measurement is, I thought I would just provide a few brief slides so that councillors could be reminded of what we were trying to measure. So typical economic impact measurement includes the evaluation of employment, wages, GDP, economic output. These can be used to measure potential projects or sectors within a community, for example. The level of employment is typically measured in full-time equivalents. So for instance, in some industries, tourism is a great example, whereby they employ a number of part-time workers. These positions are aggregated into a full-time equivalent number for reporting purposes. Wages are reported remuneration of workers that are linked to activities and operations within the defined study scope. So this can also include direct and indirect wages. GDP is the value-added impact. So this impact estimates the increase in local employee wages plus local business profits. So not total revenue like an economic output impact would measure, but what the total, but what the actual profit is of the business. An economic output captures total gross output of firms involved in activities linked to operations. There are three major components of economic impact that are classified as direct, indirect, and induced impacts. And collectively, they capture how the economic impact of an industry can impact the local and provincial economy or a project. Direct impacts account for the economic activity of the target sector or project itself. Indirect impacts are those that result because of the direct impacts. And induced impacts are economic impacts created by the spending of wages, salaries, and profits earned by those working in direct and indirect economic activities. So in total, that provides the sum of direct, indirect, and induced effects provide total impact for a project or an industry. So for instance, employment is measured for a business that directly links or indirectly links to a sector or project activities or operations. So for the instance of port operations, the employees that directly are employed by the port, such as terminal operators, longshoremen, or tenants, and those that are the result, employed as a result of purchases made by firms to undertake activities and operations are indirect, such as goods, service, services supplied to the port, equipment, or fuel. There are a couple of different approaches that one can take to measure economic impact. The multiplier approach is a common approach, which assesses the effects of the economy on, sorry, which assesses the effects on an economy of a change in final demand for the output of a given industry. It provides a measure of the interdependence between an industry and the rest of the economy. There are national and provincial multipliers that are calculated to show the direct, indirect, and induced effects on gross output, the detailed components of GDP, including jobs and imports. And these multipliers are generally derived from an input-output study. So if you were to apply this to a local community, a multiplier is a measure of how dollars interjected into a community are respent, thereby leading to additional economic activity. Or for $1 of economic activity, the output multiplier measures the combined effect of a dollar change in its sales on the output of all local industries. The multiplier effect is measuring dollars and resources flowing between entities within the community and accounting for leakages. Leakages are dollars spent outside the community, such as inputs or imports, wages saved, so when employee receives wages, a part is spent, a part is saved, and taxes paid. The other approach is the input-output approach. And this model determines the economic impact of an initial investment in the economy of a predefined area by tracking how the investment recirculates within the economic area depending on interdependencies of a region's industries. So it uses region and industry-specific multipliers. And those multipliers are developed for either a specific province or a specific economic sector to estimate how much of an initial event investment is respent by its suppliers across different industries and by employees of the firm and its suppliers. The total economic impact of the investment to the total, to the local economic area is the sum of direct, indirect, and induced effect. And an IO model estimates employment impact, new jobs generated in the region, in any, any industry as a result of the initial investment. So the illustration that you see on the slide demonstrates how an input-output model works. The matrix has column entries representing inputs to an industrial sector. The row entries represent outputs from a given sector. The table represents a comprehensive picture of supply and use of all products and income generated from production. So it really shows how much the production of each sector is and how output from each sector may become an input to another sector. The applicability of each methodology or approach to a particular impact analysis depends on several factors, including the underlying study question, the size of the study area, the number of economic activities under the study, the level of detail needed for analysis. And so in general, multiplier-based analysis requires fewer data. It's less expensive and can be completed faster than an IO model-based analysis. But the calculated indirect and total impact reflects industry averages, which often don't reflect the local or regional cost of production function. So it hasn't been localized and doesn't really represent the the local operating systems for, for a community. Also, an output multiplier-based model can't be used as a basis for input spend or supply-side impact analysis. Input-output models are a mathematical representation of an economy formulated in terms of transactions between industries, governments, employees, and households. And these models are based on detailed business and demographic data collected mainly by StatsCan. They provide a much more detailed explanation of economic impact and a better avenue for avoiding accounting challenges. So both approaches were considered for, for sectors. And I will get into each sector after this slide. But I'll just summarize that for the agrofood sector, the IO model or input-output model offers more capability to customize an impact analysis that better meet or match the characteristics of the Squamish agrofood sector and will provide a more accurate estimate of local or regional impact. For forestry and wood products, the recommendation is to proceed with an input-output model as it offers more capability to customize the analysis of economic contribution of the Squamish area forest sector and generate a more accurate estimate. For high-tech, a dual-pathway approach has been recommended. So first, a supply-side impact assess estimation approach or IO should be adopted for one of the significant clean technology firms in Squamish, while a demand-side impact estimation or multiplier approach could be applied to estimate the impact of the rest of the Squamish high-tech sector. And at this time, for Creative Industries, the recommendation is not to proceed with impact assessment, but instead more of a situational analysis to understand the composition of the sector. So now I'm going to provide a short review of each recommended approach by sector. So to start off with, I thought I would point out that also Economic Development and the district just completed a new photo shoot. And so this is one of the new images. And Nicole Burney was the photographer, and this is one of our local firms. So Economic Development undertook work in 2018 with the help of Van Street Consultants to define priority sectors. That is identify subsectors and industries of the economy that when rolled up define our priority sectors. And using this work for the purpose of study design, Crane Management reviewed the traditional definition of the sector, newer contemporary definitions to create a definition for study purposes. For agrofood specifically, the traditional definition includes primary production, secondary processing, and agriculture supply firms. A recent addition due to the changing nature of agricultural-based businesses is consideration for vertical integration, or rather tying together the controller management of two or more stages in production of a single commodity anywhere between the farm supplier and the final retailer. For instance, a packing company with cattle feeding operations. Another addition is that of new industries such as cannabis production or agritourism. To the right, you'll see what we've deemed as a local definition for agrofoods. The illustration on this slide demonstrates the composition of the local agrofood sector and its interdependencies and presents a high-level flow chart of Squamish's area's agrofood sector from an economic impact perspective. Four agrofood sector segments have been broadly defined on the basis that agrofood sector revenues are generally through one or more of primary agricultural production, wood and beverage processing, agritourism, and retailing of locally-produced foods. These four segments are shown in the figure as overlapping because of the structure, structural diversification within the traditional agrofood sectors of primary farm production and food and beverage processing. For example, local craft beer makers have onsite restaurants and local farm products are sold, for the most part, both on farm and at Squamish Farmers Market. But the latter is also a retail outfit for producers from other BC areas. For the purpose of conducting this impact study, the sector composition has been shown on the top left-hand quadrant and on the previous slide. It's recommended. The defined local study area encompasses activities and operations within the District of Squamish and SLRD Electoral Area D, broadly defined as Squamish Valley. Regional modeling study area would be SLRD, and that's aligned to the Squamish cultural plan. And the Goods and Service Supply Study area would be BC. The recommended approach is an input-output approach, which offers more capability to customize an impact analysis to the characteristics of the Squamish agrofood sector. And data sourcing would be through detailed investigation by primary collection means and data collection from remaining businesses. The second one is forestry and value-added wood products. Forestry traditionally encompasses value-added wood products. They've been identified separately due to the prioritization of wood industries as an important contributor to our local economy. Traditionally, the definition of the forestry sectors includes harvesting, support activities, wood processing, and value-added components. Today, the integration of bioenergy and bioprodacts as well as indigenous cultural uses, such as wood used for hats, boats, totems, blankets, regalia, masks, expand that definition. To the right side is the proposed local definition that would form the basis of measurement. The Squamish forest sector is defined more broadly here than in previous impact analysis exercise, exercises undertaken by the province or forestry associations at task by incorporating bioenergy and bioprodacts, as well as those indigenous cultural uses. Although the latter constitutes a small piece of the use of Squamish area timber, the activity is, should be recognized and described. And biomass energy services and bioprodacts are an evolving area of local interest. They should also be recognized and described in terms of their current status in the Squamish area. As with agrofoods, this flow chart depicts or the rather complex nature or rather composition of the local forestry and wood sector along with its interdependencies. Timber harvesting in the Sioux TSA and the TFL 38 is the basic economic activity that underpins the overall performance of the Squamish forest sector. Although major timber processing facilities are no longer present in Squamish, the local timber harvest underpins a wide-ranging base of economic activity in the Squamish area, in other areas of southwest BC, and in a few international jurisdictions. The Squamish area timber harvest requires both road and water transport to other BC and international markets, underpins local log sorting, tree planting, and resource road building and maintenance services, and supports some local processing and underlies, underlines wood product manufacturing in other areas of southwest BC and a few international jurisdictions. The focus of this analysis would be on the four sector economic activities carried out by Squamish-based enterprises and organizations. And the impact analysis would focus on the named activities in the green shaded boxes that comprises Squamish forest sector and their indirect and induced level impacts. The proposed analysis would not attempt to estimate economic impact registered elsewhere in BC through the processing of Squamish area logs. The analysis would incorporate the local activity generated in sorting and transporting log or export. To summarize, the top-left quadrant includes subsectors for measurement. The proposed local studied area includes District of Squamish with Goods and Service Supply Study areas encompassing BC. The focus of this analysis would be estimating the economic contribution of Squamish-based enterprises that either carry out forest sector-related activities within District of Squamish boundaries or commute from Squamish to other locales to carry out forest sector-related activities. The recommended measurement approach is to use an input-output measurement approach and BC impact estimate with BC estimate, impact estimate capabilities. And data sourcing would be completed to compile detailed production and revenue data from a small sample of enterprises, followed by collecting data on gross revenue, employment for the rest of these, for the rest of enterprises. The next study would be high-technology. BC Stats has an established definition for the high-technology sector. It's table, the table on the slide lists the NAICS codes or National Account Codes that are represented in BC Stats' definition of high-tech, of the high-tech sector. And the definition of the high-tech sector is based on the aggregation of several NAICS industry codes created by BC Stats. And it's well, it's generally well-established in the province. The definition was adopted for the few impact studies that have been carried out for BC regions or communities. And it's a diverse sector with 39 industries listed in the BC Stats' definition, 17 manufacturing industries, and 22 Given the wide acceptance of the BC Stats' definition, its general applicability to Squamish, it's recommended using this definition for identifying Squamish industries and businesses that should be taken into account in an economic impact study of the local high-technology sector. For this study, a dual-pathway approach to measure impact is being recommended. The high-tech sector can be complex in terms of its industry composition, but also on the commercial development of its enterprises. Lots of early-stage companies rely on outside sources of capital, such as venture capital companies, angel investors, and other equity investors sustain their operation, including their payrolls. For these companies, their gross revenue earned from the sale of goods and services only supports a portion of their spending on employees and intermediate inputs from suppliers. So focusing solely on gross revenue or employment to help estimate an early-stage company's economic impact is not going to accurately portray or show its supply chain impacts. Also, high-technology companies sometimes do not fit neatly into established NAICS code industries. Some companies try to create a product or service breakthrough or disruption within a broad sector or industry category. And if this technology shift gains traction in the new marketplace, then one result may be the establishment of a new sub-industry category. So a supply-side impact estimation approach should be adopted for the one significant firm and a demand site that exists in Squamish. And a demand-side impact estimation approach should be applied to estimate the impact of the rest of Squamish high-technology sector. A supply-side impact can be prepared by inputting the direct employment and direct spend on goods and services data for this firm into a suitable input-output model. For the other companies in the Squamish high-tech sector, the demand-side or industry impact estimation methodology is recommended. The study area will be the District of Squamish with the Goods and Service Supply Study area being the rest of BC. Finally, the Creative Industries is the last sector that we'll look at. However, Creative Industries is not necessarily a specific sector or rather, it's rather a gathering of a number of sectors put together. So this is a well-established Statistics Canada definition for what they would call a cultural satellite account. And this is the recommended starting point by the consultant. So from an economic perspective, creative industries, creative sector, and the cultural sector are terms that get used interchangeably. And the sector is made up of businesses and organizations that are found in a variety of classified industries and parts of industries. It's been described as a synthetic industry sector because culture does not exist as a distinct industry. So to help address the matter and provide consistent basis for collecting and analyzing data, StatsCan developed this framework for researching and presenting creative sector culture or creative industry statistics that is widely used across Canada. It's based on a set of culture or creative domains and subdomains, ancillary domains, and transversal domains. And within each of these cascading levels, StatsCan has mapped applicable codes, or NAICS codes, and product and occupational codes as well. So moving forward, we recommend an application of this framework as a starting point for defining Squamish's creative industries. But at this time, an impact study is not recommended, and instead, a situational analysis can be considered using that framework to better define and understand creative industries within Squamish. Another aspect the consultant was asked to review was competitive dynamics and other impacts outside of economic impacts, such as social and environmental impacts. The primary objective was to understand and explain why employees, industries, businesses in the selective Squamish sectors and industries are winning or experiencing challenges within their industry. The proposed assessment included a primary focus on economic performance and drivers. And a secondary focus would be on social and environmental performance within a sustainable development framework. The proposed approach was through primary and secondary research to answer key research questions. So when we look at different socio and environmental impacts, we could consider things such as we could consider things such as impacts on population, impacts on housing, impacts on social services and social infrastructure, impacts on transportation effects and traditional land use as well as environmental assessment. And this can be all part of a dynamics assessment in future. So in terms of next steps, the plan was to complete an agrifoods impact study in 2021. Originally, the study was planned for 2020. It was delayed due to COVID. This is actually funded through the B.C. Rural Dividend Remaining Funding that was received in 2018 and partners Tourism Squamish and the Chamber of Commerce. And the partners wanted to undertake agrifoods as its next impact study review after completing Tourism. And this is also part of SLRD agricultural plan deliverables. There are no immediate plans for remaining impact studies at this time. We will seek council feedback on future recommended studies, approach methodology. And the goal would be, should we wish to undertake a study, that we would seek grant funding or take a partner to approach in the completion of this study. At this point, we are not contemplating recommended sector dynamics work because we are highly focused on our existing studies and plans, including the emerging sector plan, which will capture elements of sector dynamics. And therefore, once that is, that work is more complete, then we can determine what gaps exist in terms of impact determinate. And that is the end of the presentation. So stop sharing my screen. And Derek DiBacio is also available for technical-related questions concerning the approach and methodology. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Council, we've got to stay on schedule, which is our goal. We've got 10 minutes here with Ms. Mulligan, so we'll try to be efficient and concise if we can. We're going to start with Counselor Race. Go ahead.
Thank you. Two questions. So first of all, is there a reason we don't seem to include the economic impact of taxation between different sectors? And the second is with respect to social or environmental impact of a sector, how we might actually try to gauge it? And I guess the third question is why we would do these studies at all? And I assume it is to guide decision-making in the future. I'm not trying to be facetious, but I'm assuming that this becomes a decision-making tool for whoever's making decisions. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Okay. Derek, did you want to answer how compensation measured within the studies? And the social measurement? I can answer the last question.
Sure. Thanks. Yeah, the, when you do the modeling with the input-output model that we use, which is modeled, which is actually leased by the B.C. government right now. Yes, it does produce taxation numbers, quite detailed ones. Property taxation is probably not perfect in the modeling, but the other taxation levels, personal taxes, corporate taxes, your other taxes are done in the model, and it does show the interdependencies between industries in the taxation sense. So within a modeling context, there's a fair amount of detail on the taxation number, which goes that way. On the other question, the social and environment, good question. Basically, number one, you say you're going to do that. You're just not going to look at the economics/financial numbers. You're also going to look at social indicator situations, environmental. And basically, you would customize it, and you know, just common sense really. You know, I do a fair amount of this sustainability, sustainable development work. And so each industry's got a little bit different dynamic in terms of its particular effects or impacts on an area in each of those broad categories, social, environmental. And then it's a little bit common sense, you have to be a little bit practical in choosing what effects you're going to zero in on. But the substance is you're going to pick out certain indicators and then that will get at the effects which are interesting to people within the area. And then, and then the other key issue that you're going to look at is what data you're going to use. And basically, in broad terms, it's qualitative, quantitative. And again, it's a little bit of a budgetary issue and a time issue in terms of what you're going to emphasize, whether it's qualitative, let's face it, it's a little easier, quicker that you can do than say quantitative data, but it can be interesting in both dimensions if there's available data. So just to give you a very simple example, say in the forest industry per se, and there's various social and environmental dimensions you can look at in the forest industry. And there's a fair amount of indicator information available in the forest side of things because they do sustainable forest planning at all levels, by regional, provincial landscape, etc. levels in the forest industry. So a fair amount of data out there, which people probably not even fully aware of. But even at the processing, so you might even just look at, you know, a very simple way is see the energy source that a particular processing plant is using. Because, say, within the forest industry, especially in the last bunch of years, a lot of the forest processing entities are using forest residues and wood residue fueled energy, they're converted to that to a large extent. But some are still using, seeing natural gas in some places or combination of natural gas residue. So from a GHD standpoint, and also just the criteria or contaminants that are associated with natural gas-fired or diesel-fueled energy, propane-fueled energy. You know, it'd be interesting to say, is that entity using a bio-fueled energy source? And it can just be that, yes or no? So you can keep these things pretty simple if you want. So my main message on it would use a customized approach. You know, your choice of indicators and data, you're going to, just practically, you're going to have to look at your resources to do the study, but it can all be done quite easily. And it's basically making that decision at the outset. We're not just going to do economic, we're going to do a triple bottom line, is usually the way I express it. And we're also going to look at some social and environmental dimensions as well. So totally doable, as we're saying, okay, we want to do it that way. And Kate, go ahead on the last question.
Okay. And if I may, just add quickly to the social and environmental measurement. I know that soon, staff will be bringing forward social procurement or a new procurement considerations for council, which include considerations around social procurement. So that would be one example by which, you know, both cultural, social, environmental considerations can be put forward from a procurement standpoint. And then data can be captured for that reporting and understanding the impact of particular projects. So in terms of the basis for studies, the why piece. So economic impact analysis really provides a basis for which to understand how a particular sector or industry works and the interdependencies between industries or a supply chain within a given community. It also provides, from a decision-making standpoint, you know, I don't want to sound that we're trying to prioritize sectors, but in essence, we are trying to understand which sectors have the greatest impact and which ones maybe have potential to have greater or more significant impact within a given community. And so the economic impact assessment really provides a basis for us to understand sort of the scope and magnitude of a particular sector and its impact on a given community. That really helps us get, from a decision-making standpoint, whether that's, you know, allocating resources or funding towards the development of that sector. Or, you know, even from the perspective of using that information to do things like apply for grants or create new partnership opportunities with respect to a given industry or sector. So economic impact assessment provides a lot of valuable information. For instance, with the tourism industry impact assessment that recently took place, Tourism Squamish, the Chamber, and the District of Squamish have been actively using the data from that to not only promote and talk about and increase the awareness of the importance of the tourism sector relative to the community, but also as we move forward with grant applications, we are using this data. And now that we have a baseline for measurement, you know, we can start to look at ways to measure on a continual basis, maybe not to the magnitude of an impact study all the time, but within the context of one.
Yeah. I'm conscious of time, so I'll stop there. That's the stuff you could go on for a while.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Counselor Anderson, Counselor Peddingill.
Thank you. I think we are going to run out of time here, unfortunately. Chair, I'd like to ask whether you will entertain comments this time, or would you prefer to have a round of comments after questions?
Let's, let's keep it efficient. We'll give you comments, questions right now. But given that we just had a nine-minute reply for our 10-minute question period, which I appreciate, it is going to be a chance to keep us on time. But I'm going to give everyone an opportunity to ask questions or comments, but perhaps this will be your one shot, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to, I will mix it up then, and I'll, things I wanted to highlight. Now, in the report to council, there is attention given to higher education and transportation. I'd like to suggest that there are other ways to look at that. Higher education is a topic for the District of Squamish at this time in our dealings with Crest University situation and our hopes to encourage a Capella University presence. So I suggest that maybe there is some other angle to assess our interest in a review of higher education strategy. Regarding transportation, there, I think that it isn't necessarily, as it stated, addressed in other reports or in terms of commercial transportation. There's a whole area of focus area three and four in the Marine Action Strategy, which is awaiting implementation, largely focused on commercial transportation and passenger transportation, if you like, and recreational boating tourism gateway in the Mancomblind Channel. So I think that we might consider that as transportation as well. Squamish terminals is not our port. It is just one aspect of dealing with deep-sea vessels. So following on that, I wondered, another ongoing activity of council of the district is implementing arts, cultural, and heritage strategy. And a general question, I guess, or point, have we considered in thinking about creative industries that there's a lot of overlap there? And that implementation of the arts, cultural, and heritage strategy recommendations would go a long way towards what we are actually talking about in a sector and a situation analysis for creative industries? I just offer that as an observation. The Counselor Race has asked a question regarding our purposes in this. And I'm going to cite from the agrifood report on page 21, that considerations will vary based upon the planning endeavors that the impact analysis is expected to feed into. And I think that that's a big question and one that we have to keep in mind. And I'll refer to forestry, the section there. I think we have to assess very seriously what scope in terms of geographic area. The region, it is a regional industry, and the fate of the industry is largely governed by, that is, the primary industry, by provincial policies relating to the region, not the Squamish area. And that this is the priority of industry. And if we want to advance the primary forest industry, the regional AAC should be central and focused. And I find the discussion of the AAC for the region on page 34, that issue is not in focus. That is, that's the central issue, is how do we utilize the AAC that relates to provincial policy? So my general point here is that we must be mindful of our purposes and what our priorities may be. And as we need to decide that first before we come back to define what we, or be mindful of that when we decide where we want to prioritize our analysis. There is a reference to recreational trails, and I maybe would just suggest that maybe that should come into focus as an outcome or impact or relevant to the primary forestry sector. We have had a trails study come before us just last week, but it did not identify the forestry land managers in their engagement plan. That will be rectified, of course, but that recreational trails is an output of the forest, forest industry, if you like, the access and interface, so that this might perhaps be highlighted as a potential focus. Biomass is referred to as an opportunity. According to industry, it's a cost, and it's a major cost. For example, for our community forest, we may not have a profit because of the cost of dealing with wood waste. It is well over half a million dollars a year for just the four log sorts. So it is, that we need to keep that in focus. It is an enormous burden. And as well as being a potential opportunity, we hope, but that we shouldn't lose sight of that. The industry will remind us of that immediately. I think that as I read the section on, excuse me, I'll just go to the page, on the situation analysis approach and content, a lot of this information has been presented by industry to council over the last five years. There's several reports. Industry does a lot of statistics gathering in itself. It does this because of lobbying the province. You need to know who's employed, what's at stake, and there is a lot of information available. In 2016, a significant study was made by the local industry on its employment impacts. And the reason is because of the need for advocacy vis-à-vis the province. And this forest region is a leader province-wide in doing advocacy on particular issue, log export and First Nations involvement, because we're unique in that respect. So I suggest that there's a lot of, the key thing is dialogue with industry. And industry, yes, has maintained ongoing charts of the companies involved. There's 65 companies in Squamish alone in the sector. They're mostly small. So that, yeah, I'll just come back to them to a couple of final points. I think it is, remains an issue as to how we address wood products manufacturing in a sense of value-added relative to the primary industry because they are so different in the people who work for them, the markets, the policies, the land use issues, and what do we do as strategies to advance value-added, which is largely green building, relative to the primary industry, which is largely a First Nations industry? There are different strategies. And so this is a puzzle, and I don't have an answer. But we have been given some indicators that the local manufacturing industry and the medium industrial issue is, I mean, we're going to have to decide, sort out the nuances there and find where they lie respectively in our, in our strategies. Finally, I'm wanting to see a balance between core and enabling sectors, our attention to them relative to the emerging target sectors. And if we're not going to invest in these studies, and I'm actually not displeased at that at this time, I'm wondering, what are we going to be doing to advance our core and enabling sectors in our upcoming work plans and budgets? I'm interested to see a balance, and Kate Mulligan has assured us that that is her priority as well. And so that's just an outstanding thing I'd like to have further discussed is perhaps through our budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Ms. Mulligan, did you have a reply? I heard there was a question at the, at the end of the, of the comments there, or would you like to address anything?
Maybe just.
And I just would like to mention to council, we'll give everyone time to make their comments and ask their questions. So we're obviously going to run a little over here, and I'll figure out how best to, to deal with that, whether that comes from our lunch break or from extending later into the day. But we'll give everyone a chance to ask their, make their statements. But we'll give everyone a chance to ask their make their statements and ask their questions. So sorry, Ms. Mulligan, take it away.
Thank you, Chair. Just a, I guess, clarification on my end, if that's okay. I just I just want to be clear on. So there were some comments at the beginning around higher education and transport transportation. And my understanding from Counselor Anderson's statements was that perhaps taking a forward approach in terms of of looking at potential impacts associated with sectors as opposed to a backwards approach of measuring what the impact actually is. Is that accurate in in terms of reflecting on the comments around higher education and and transportation around in particular marine marine transportation?
I suppose it's looking at gray areas and being aware as we go of what we're doing in other initiatives already with the district and seeing it as part of a whole picture.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. And in terms of the forestry comments, if there's anything that Derek would specifically want to highlight with regards to Counselor Anderson's comments, I would definitely provide provide him the opportunity. So I'm not sure.
Just just quickly, I appreciate your comments. Counselor Anderson, very good ones on the forest industry. And just quickly on this one here, again, I would get back to when we actually got into, say, folks decided to do a forestry slash wood product study. You know, you would work with the local industry to define the dimensions and the details of the particular study. And, you know, you related about the study area, which you made some good points about that. And I agree, like, I've done a lot of forest industry studies and economic impact and otherwise. And basically, you try to tailor it to the needs of the the local industry per se. And that can all be done, I guess is a simple way to put it. And and the forest three studies are interesting ones, because you're speaking to a lot of different audiences just because there's a lot of different interests in quotation marks that look at the forest industry, both inside the forest and you see and outside the forest industry. And these studies communicate and are used for a lot of different purposes, whether it's land and resource use planning, or speaking within the industry itself, or speaking to NGOs, et cetera, et cetera. But the bottom line is you work with the local industry and some of the other interested parties, council, people like Kate, et cetera, to work out the exact nature of the study that's required. And it's going to be useful for the particular local area, which is totally a doable exercise.
And then finally, with regards to the balance between enabling and core and and our emerging sectors, this, you know, presentation is focused on impact measurement. So I'm going to answer Counselor Anderson's question with respect to impact measurement. So really, the the four study areas would encompass not only our emerging sectors, so the ones that are within the emerging theme of green economy and outdoor recreation, but also encompass many of our traditional, what we're calling core and enabling sectors. So creative industries, high technology, and forestry and wood products, transportation, elements of transportation are all encompassed within those emerging themes as well. So this will give a fairly significant snapshot in the way that we we formulated the economic development team and 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 working with Derek was to understand, okay, what do we want to measure within those prior core enabling and emerging themes? And where are they captured within those four broader sectors that we've we've presented today? And so we are capturing many of those. What is going to be have have to happen as sort of a backwards exercise is then kind of extracting out information on particular subsectors to kind of create our own profile of maybe the emerging themes, for instance. That that's from a from a impact methodology and approach perspective. And I'm not sure if I'm properly answering Counselor Anderson's question.
Thank you very much. Counsel Anderson, do you have a follow-up or any clarity to provide, or shall we move on?
I think, Chair, that we'll have opportunity in our budget and work plan discussions to to address this further. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson. I have Counselor Pedengill, followed by Mayor Elliott. So go ahead, Counselor Pedengill.
Thank you. Two things. As I understand the methodologies behind some of these models, they are dependent on a lot of assumptions, which seem based on the way an economy typically works locally or has worked historically. And we're seeing enormous disruptive change from technological change, I think, climate change, the pandemic. And I think the presumption is these things will just happen more so as we go forward. So it makes me wonder if these models are nearly as predictive now as they might have been 10 years ago. And 10 years from now, are they going to be even less predictive? And so I guess it's a bit of a question about how resilient are these models really to change to the change we're seeing? And and I guess, you know, where it leaves me right now, as I understand these, is is much more focused on where we want to be as opposed to what the models say about where we've been, based on our revenues and so on. And so I guess I do have a preference to really focus on the social and economic changes we want to see. Some of these some of this modeling is interesting, but I'm, I think, a little more focused on the opportunity. But maybe I'm incorrect about how resilient these models are to the sorts of changes we're seeing in the world.
I'm going to let Derek answer the question with regards to the model specifically.
No, I appreciate what you're saying. And, you know, it's an observation, which you hear about most economic models, because they're based upon recent historical circumstance. I guess use that particular term. But so that is a situation with the models that, as you may have picked up from the dialogue, when you're doing these at the local level especially, you're really going after the data as much as possible that you can get from the local industry. And I'll use the, for example, of the tourism impact study we did. We had very good cooperation from the local industry by quite frankly, any yardstick. And Tourism Squamish was great in helping to get. So we got direct information from the visitors in Squamish and from the local businesses. And then you feed that into the models. So the key is that, okay, what is happening? So we basically got a baseline for the particular year. And then people are then planning off that baseline, because then we compared it against to a previous year, which is quite a few years ago, if you remember the reports. And so we were able to express and communicate the very large jump in visitors, number of visitors and visitor expenditures and overall economic impact over a period of decade. So then the people in the tourism sector are now thinking, okay, this is where we are as of such and such a date. And as your to your point, then you start to think about, okay, this is where we are. But where do we want to go? Where do we see the trends? And that's partly what those competitive dynamics piece was done that Kate had us do. And she mentioned she's got studies underway that's looking at the emerging trends. So you're basically trying to develop a baseline and then jump from it. And just my other last little point, and it just gets back to what Counselor Race had mentioned. I like to, you know, personal preference, but just not use the models per se, that economic slash financial dimension. I like it when we get to do sustainable development, triple bottom line sustainability, whatever you want to look at it, social and environmental approach too as well. So we have some indicators there. So you can try to capture the whole, if you will, to some of the points that you were raising. But, you know, the models, you know, they have their constraints, if you will. But you can use them to get to where you were talking about going in terms of planning for the future.
And I would just add to that, I think one of the large parts of the, you know, for instance, the tourism study, impact study was contextualizing what occurred between 2007 that base year and and what happened in between then and 2018. So you're taking into account things like shocks to to an economy. And all those could include social, environmental, and economic shocks. So and that's typically, you know, when we conduct an economic impact study, an opportunity to contextualize what's happened as an event to make these changes. And then and then within that contextualization, to take that information and apply it forward. So, you know, what if scenarios in terms of what if there was another pandemic? What if there was a large environmental shock? So there is room within impact studies and 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 I just think that it's a good baseline measurement to understand where we are at a point in time and then use it to contextualize back and and plan forward.
Thank you. And my second question was just about how we're classifying businesses. And there's a few things where I thought, oh, I'm not sure that's the right sector for that business. The main one for me was engineering being placed under high tech. So I can imagine an engineering firm where half their time is spent developing new greenhouse technology. And the other half of their team is is working on terraforming for the forestry industry. And so it would seem if you put all that value and then analyze it under high tech, you're really skewing the benefits and costs of our various sectors. So I'm just wondering how we deal with that sort of thing.
Derek, did you want to take that answer?
Yeah, again, you know, you make another good point. There are some, let's use the word arbitrary decisions made in terms of categorization of some of these industries. You know, you do attempt to, say, let's use the engineering one, which is your example. You know, if the industry, if the engineering sector itself is fairly focused on, say, let's just say, traditional industries, whether it's forestry in your example, or highway operations and construction, et cetera, et cetera. And that's where that civil engineering industry, then, you know, you probably, you know, slot it into, you know, engineering services or forest industry or transportation, whatever, that, you know, that support industries for those particular sectors. But if the industry is a or the engineering sector is more electrical, electronics, or communications, then we're going to slot it into the high tech, because then that's the particular focus. But even there, you know, it's a little bit of arbitrariness, but you can't really get away from that. It's you're doing it with statistics all the time in terms of describing the economy. You know, you just end up categories, and it doesn't work off always perfectly. Because people say, just as you say, well, what about, you know, is it really high tech? Or is it more digging into a traditional industry? So you attempt to try to categorize it as accurately as possible. But there is a certain amount of arbitrary decisions that you end up making. But that but you're working also at a fairly high level, too. And you, you know, if you're working, looking at a specific company, and you can just say, oh, that's high tech, or or that's feeding into civil engineering for transportation and construction maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. Or so it's very easy to do, but you're looking at, say, 10, 20, 30. And it's a little easier to categorize on broader industries, I would say. But you make a good point, and you do think about it when you're trying to make these decisions about where does it belong, the current enterprise and subsector, et cetera.
And I'll just I'll just add that those are based on a national account code. So it's a system that's developed. And those North American account codes basically are standardized, and Stats Canada uses those for reporting. So the industries are slotted in to those sectorial definitions, or the sub subsectors are slotted into those sectorial definitions. And what gets hard, too, is when there's a business where a primary, to your point, Counselor Pedengill, when there's a company that has a split between primary focuses. So we're even addressing that at the employment lands model level when we're collecting inventory. And it is always an ongoing challenge, and it takes the analyst to look at sort of the composition and the focus of a company to estimate that properly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Elliott.
Just quickly, well, one, we are running out of time. But this is really was just an introduction to the process. And as these reports come forward, we'll have an opportunity as a council to understand the goals, what we will include, what we don't, and address some of the questions that people have raised here today. So this isn't the end of the conversation, was an introduction to the conversation. My question for you, Ms. Mulligan, is, given that we've lost the Rural Dividend Fund, where are grants available to do this kind of work now?
Thank you, three, the chair. So right now, the grants that we have to look at are on a case-by-case basis. In terms of funding opportunities, one of the goals economic development has is to look at partnership opportunities. And so as new grants, and there are a lot of grants coming out at the provincial level steam cycle on a very regular basis right now, we'll be looking at whether or not there's opportunity there, but also looking at an industry association opportunity for partnership and 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 focus on developing partnerships through that through that process. So I don't have one specific grant that's been identified. We're really right now just using the remaining portion of the of the BC Rules Dividend Fund for the purpose of the Agrofood.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing is the province hasn't replaced that fund with something else that would be sustainable and over the long term that we can access. And that might be something that we want to look at as a way to stimulate the provincial economic recovery is helping communities understand their opportunities in a more concrete way. So something just to keep in the back of our mind, council. And thank you very much to both of you for for enlightening us on these approaches.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone that hasn't spoken yet that would like to comment or ask questions? Seeing none. Counsel, we have a, can I have a motion to to receive for information? Okay, moved by Counselor Pedengill, second by Mayor Elliott. All those in favor, opposed if any? Thank you very much, everybody. We're going to split the difference. I think we're going to do a break now. We've, I'd like to give everyone ample time for lunch. So let's come back at at 1:15. So we'll sort of split. Is that a no from Counselor Stoner, from Elliot? Let's discuss. Counselor Stoner first.
We have two delegations coming in starting at one o'clock, so I'm just cognizant of external focuses time.
Yeah. Agenda. My thought was we could communicate with them on the on the timing. I just want to go under a half hour for.
Half a half hour. My preference would be to stick to that agenda with external.
Pull it back on time. Is that your preference as well, Mayor Elliott?
That is my preference. And then maybe we can extend one of our recesses later in the day.
Yeah, there's a five-minute one that looks like it could be pushed. Okay, we'll do that. We'll be back. We'll hold to the one o'clock start. Thank you, council. And we're in recess till one o'clock. Thank you.
Carrie and I have you back.
Thank you. Welcome back to the Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, December 24. I'm Counselor Armin Herford, and as Acting Mayor, I'll be chairing this meeting. We're on to item 5.1, which is the Squamish Arts Council annual report. And we've got Amy Linnenberg, Executive Director from the Arts Council, here to present to us. Take it away, Amy.
Hi, everybody. Thank you very much. I'm going to share my screen here. All right, can everybody see my my screen?
Looks good.
Okay, I know that the date is incorrect, but I know that it's the 24th, I promise. So I hope everybody's been having an easy, breezy, casual 2020 like me. In all seriousness, though, 2020 has been a wonderful year for the Squamish Arts Council. It's been difficult individually and collectively in the same way that it has been for everybody. But it's also, I wonder if you'll agree, it's been a year of extremes. It's been extremely hard and extremely beautiful. And I think I've seen a lot of different communities come together in some really amazing ways. And the arts and culture community is the same. The community has really stepped up, come together, and also grown, I think, as the people who are already very active in the arts and culture community deepened their connections to one another and to to the community at large. But I think also a lot of people were reminded of the fact But I think also a lot of people were reminded of the fact that everyone is a part of the arts and culture community. It's something that's very intrinsic to us all as humans. And so a lot of people remembered that, that this is a, a community that's always there for them. So our programming as well has felt especially relevant this year. We saw greater numbers of people participating in our programs and we had a lot more interactions. I've heard arts and culture this year been described as little e essential, which I love. And that's because I think anybody who previously doubted the role that arts and culture play in our community's collective wellbeing are no longer doubters. They understand it as they themselves have turned to these, to these communities, to these events, to these classes, to these, these programs and offerings. And I think also this has been a year of division in a lot of ways. It's been a year where we've seen how people are very different, but also how arts and culture are a means for us to understand our own cultural identities, which allows us then to recognize someone else's cultural identities and then to tolerate it and then to embrace it and then to eventually celebrate it. So I think this has been a very, very interesting year where the Arts Council has felt very called to action and very needed. And we've had a wonderful year full of amazing programming. And so I'm going to take you through that in this presentation. But first I just wanted to say I feel a lot of gratitude that you invested in us and in arts and culture so that when perhaps maybe this will be the darkest time, a lot of us remember, we were ready to step up and ready to act and, and I'm ready to help support our community. So thank you so much for supporting arts and culture and the Squamish Arts Council. I'm so grateful that at this point in our relationship, we don't have to make a case for arts and culture, that everybody here understands its value. And I also want to say a massive thank you to staff who have been just incredible supporting us this year. So I'm going to go through the presentation. I'm not going to read everything word for word. It's mostly here so that you can reference it. I'll just talk a little bit about the behind the scenes or if there's anything missing or to answer any questions. So before I dive into the presentation, are there any questions? Yep, okay, perfect. So here's our mission, vision and mandate. So we definitely worked on executing this this year. One of our biggest, most popular programs is youth at art. It looked very different this year, still wonderful, but very different. So Amped in the Park became Amped in Your Neighborhood. So rather than trying to bring many, many people to one place to gather and enjoy arts and culture, rather we brought arts and culture to people's neighborhoods. Everything was very pop up so that we couldn't encourage a crowd. We knew that people were just so delighted by the idea of having some sort of a musical opportunity that if we announced the locations that we might draw in an unintentional crowd. So this year we brought music to the neighborhoods and it was amazing. We also shared it with a lot of people by social media. And some people had some really amazing experiences. I, I hope some of you were able to catch some of these shows because they were pretty special. Scholarships was a program that we saw a huge amount of value in this year, not only as a means to support vulnerable youth who are often the recipients of these programs, but also our local businesses who weren't seeing the same amount of business that they needed to this year in order to sustain themselves. So rather than work on the 50/50 sponsorship split that we usually do with businesses, we were able to fully fund these, these scholarships. And so our, our partners again were the Squamish Academy of Music, Squamish Stein Center and Happiness. And then we've also started consistently offering secondary, Haas on Secondary Scholarship as well. Amp Together, so this was a program that we ran with Cedar Sky Community Services. They were already meeting. And so we brought music to their, their art gatherings. This wasn't advertised. Again, we didn't want to create a huge amount of gathering, but to a pre-existing program, we were able to bring some jam sessions, which was wonderful because that was actually led by two young up and coming musicians in Squamish. And they led the jam sessions and everything was very safe and outside and distanced. And a lot of community hours went into this program, which is great. Youth mentorship, we hire a lot of young people in the summer. This year was probably our biggest. Somehow we had our biggest event, our biggest year on record despite the, the pandemic. So we employed five students. A lot of hours went into local arts initiatives. Students were employed full time, some just for short periods and then some for a longer period of time. And as always, this helped to strengthen the outreach in the community, which is a wonderful outcome of this program. So you can go through here and see what the, the youth were able to learn from their positions and from their mentorship. It was, it was a wonderful year to collaborate with these young people. Wind Festival was our, this was our biggest wind festival yet, which is amazing, considering that we completely revamped the program. So yeah, we had some live streamed events. We, we had some workshops and lots of art opportunities. One of our major impulses was to spread the festival out throughout the neighborhoods, to employ as many artists, as many venues, as many makers as possible, really just to spread it out and keep that money in Squamish. So I think maybe with the exception of the Boom Booms and maybe one other artist, all of the, everything, all the money stayed inside Squamish. And it was, it was quite, quite a significant spend on the festival this year, which was amazing. We, yeah, we had a great concert up at the gondola. We had some movie nights. Everything looked very different and it was, it was quite a fun puzzle to figure out how we were going to throw a festival in a pandemic. We had some really great workshops, our market and two wonderful community art pieces. One's in Brackendale and one's downtown. I'm sure you've seen them by now. Then we did our, well, we still have our art walk, which is up now for a few more days if you want to go and catch it. So throughout the SLRD, we have venues which are downtown, the Britannia Mine Museum, and lots of great artwork, which is up in the community. We had about the same amount of artists as we had last year, just fewer venues, which is understandable. Not everybody was really excited about increasing foot traffic, especially patrons who might not be actually spending money in their stores. But what we did do this year is we opened up, we went from two studio tours last year, two studios to over 20. So you can check those out on our social media accounts where you can see how artists create inside their homes. Some people's studios are a mountain face. Some people have a full blown pottery studio. Some people work with their kitchen counter. And I think this has been a very interesting insight for our community to see that art happens everywhere. Our anonymous art show is coming up this, this Thursday. So get your tickets, support some local artists and get some wonderful, some wonderful art for your, for your Christmas gifts, $50. And you can give somebody the gift of something that's handmade. Often it's a Squamish themed piece of art and it's going to be a lot of fun. Community Galleries is a program that we didn't really talk about last year, but it's something that we took over from the Visuals Artist Society. And it's something that's been going on for quite some time. We curate shows in the Artisan Gallery, the Adventure Center Gallery, the Medical Building and Black Test Realty. And this is a great way, in addition to the foyer gallery, which is at the library, for artists to show their work in and around the community. Sometimes it's, it's an incentive. That's what's needed for, for people to pick up a brush. So the anonymous art show, for example, has been a wonderful example of people feeling an inroad or an access opportunity to create. So having community galleries helps to, helps to give people a place to show their work and to sell their work. Our Community Arts and Culture Enhancement Grant has been wonderful this year. I wonder if any of you followed the, the paddle workshop? That's what this program, this photograph is from. I was with Art Harry and Lenny Rubenowicz, and it was a really beautiful program. So all of that money funneled successfully through to some great community projects. So the Haas on Performing Arts Festival has figured out also how to, to adapt to our new conditions. The, the Portage Paddle Workshop was great. The, the library is, is putting out coals right now. There's, the SAM Jam was really fun as it moved online. And then the other two projects are still, still underway. So what's next for Squamish? We continue our pre-established programming. We will expand where we can and keep things the status quo where needed. A couple of new projects coming down the line. We are going to be bringing some art to an after school art club at Don Ross Middle School. And it's going to be free of charge. Artists in residencies will be doing a drop in style program for youth. And we're working with the school, with the artists, with the pack, with Cedar Sky Community Services to make sure that this is going to be a safe and engaging and fun program. We are going to be administering public art, which is really exciting. I've got a great new committee. And so that's, that's going to be coming up very soon. And then we have an expanded program for our Community Arts and Culture Enhancement Grant. That's our, our public facing work. We're doing a lot of work on our own organization behind the scenes. But yeah, that is my very brief and basic presentation. And I would, I would love to hear from you and answer any questions if you have them. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you for the presentation. Can I get you to take the screen down so that it allow me to see everybody that's with us here? And then, okay, council, any questions? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you again for a great report, Amy Lebenberg. I remember well your last presentation and this one is just that, that much more finessed. I am, what I was looking for in the report is references to the Arts, Culture and Heritage Strategy, or rather to its action planning. I'm going to list a couple of things that I think you can check off because your report is all about them. And that is youth, public art and showcasing who we are in Squamish and, and our talents. And these are respectively 1.3, 1.4 and 4.2. I think you've checked them off. But I would like to ask whether the Arts Council is giving consideration to other short term action plan items in the Arts, Culture and Heritage Strategy. And in particular, section five is relating to optimizing spaces. And these are short term recommendations, 5.1, 2 and 3. And partly why I ask is because these relate to an important objective of council in our strategic plan to utilize better park space and, under the neighborhood connectivity theme. So I'm wondering whether the Arts Council has had opportunity to review next steps, if you like, in looking at its own role in those items, short term items in the Arts, Culture and Heritage Strategy. There is also one I might refer to, and that is establishing a sector wide vision that of course encompasses more than the Arts Council. But could you give an update as to how you have received the Arts, Culture and Heritage Strategy and where you may go as the Arts Council for short term recommendations?
Yes, thank you for that. In regards to space specifically, it's, it's, it feels like it's a changing landscape every single day with COVID. We, we love to program Junction Park. It's, it's our, it's our home base. This year we just didn't feel like it was necessarily the safest way to program. And so we moved out of the park, but we are hoping to be back next year. We have loved the idea though of moving our programming into the neighborhoods. And so we are hoping to see that continue throughout all of our programs. So Art Walk is an easy one, for example. It, it takes venues all over the SLRD and installs art. The Wind Festival, we saw this year how easy it is to move art into many different types of spaces. It doesn't all have to be in Junction Park. And then our youth program is going to be the same thing too. Right now, with the way that things feel, it's, it's programming at home. So bringing, bringing arts and culture programming to, to people where they're at, where they're safe, with the exception of the school, which is where, you know, kids already are. They just have to walk a couple of steps over to the art room at the Don Ross Middle School. So we would love to be programming in more spaces indoors, but it's really hard to, to say for sure right now what that could look like. And then other short, short term goals. One of the things that I took away from the Arts, Culture and Heritage Strategy very strongly was the idea of collaboration and communication within the sector. So that's something that this year we focused on a lot. So for example, with the Wind Festival, we worked with a lot of different groups. We partnered with the Food Bank and Helping Hands, which aren't necessarily in our sector. But we, we spoke to as many people as we could in our sector, but then also looking to other nonprofits to try and drive fundraising opportunities. So we were actually able to raise $10,000 for Helping Hands through the Wind Festival. We're going to be working with the SBCA next month. We work with Cedar Sky Community Services and the Youth Center. So a short term goal is definitely to increase the opportunities for those kinds of conversations and partnerships and collaborations. That's been a huge outcome of the strategy, but also out of COVID, just learning that we need to band together. Optimizing space as soon as we can, as soon as the doors are open, we're going to be in there. And then the neighborhood connectivity was really cool as part of council strategic plan, but also I, I felt like that was a good takeaway from the Arts, Culture and Heritage Strategy too, was just increasing the, the places where art happens.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. And thank you so much for your presentation, Amy. An unbelievable amount of work that was able to be accomplished and was very challenging. It's really amazing to see, putting up on that thread of trying to support moving art into different spaces. I'm curious if there are some things that you've learned in terms of, are there certain neighborhoods where it's actually just really difficult to deliver art for whatever reason? Or are there like some low hanging barriers that we could maybe like try and address in the short term to make that process easier?
Oh, thank you so much for that question. That's wonderful. So I'm in conversations with staff right now to see the Arts Council have a presence in the 55 Center. But like I've said, in terms of, of spaces with COVID, short term planning is really hard. Long term planning, what we're actually hoping to do is to start building a framework of arts education, potentially online, so that as soon as we can be let into spaces and feel like we can manage gatherings safely, that we can just transfer that over right into spaces. So we don't want to be in every single neighborhood right away. We need to build a little bit slowly. We're still building our capacity as an organization. So I think where we are right now is we feel very supported by, by council and by staff. So, so thank you so much for that question. I think we're on a really good track though.
Thank you. If there was another hand, I didn't see it. Oh, Counselor Penningill, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment and thank you again, Amy, for all your work. It's been quite amazing to watch the growth of the Arts Council over the last few years. It's, and I don't want to jinx things, but it feels like a bit of a rocket ship. It's, it's taking off and I think that's partly a change in our community and appetite for more art, but also the work that, that yourself and the board is doing. And, you know, I've sort of seen instead of COVID become an obstacle. It's just taken the Arts Council in so many really fantastic new directions. Been participating in a lot of the, the SAM programming and stuff myself, and that's been fantastic. I remember hearing about the anonymous art show on the board a few years ago and I'm really excited to see it taking shape this year. And been checking out the art and have my eye on a few pieces. And so I just want to thank you very much. It's, it's all really fantastic.
Thank you so much. Yes, I saw you. You were our first ticket purchaser. So that was great. And I, I wonder which piece you're going to take. As we were hanging them, I said, I bet Chris is going to go for this. No, he's going to go for this one. There's just too many to choose from.
I'm looking for hints.
Go with whatever your heart tells you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I, I suppose I'll just add my comments quickly. I'm, I'm very impressed with the, the Arts Council's ability to find opportunities in the pandemic and to just react quickly to the ever changing. quickly to the ever-changing, uh, landscape and finding creative ways to, uh, to bring art into, into our community and into our neighborhoods. So, um, and, uh, in a longer-term planning, I, I have, uh, I have strong faith that, that that will be strong as well, but the ability on these, uh, short-term, um, sort of pivots and adjustments, uh, along the way has been, um, has been amazing. So thank you very much for, for your work and for your presentation here today. If there's no further questions, I think that will conclude this portion. So thank, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me and for, for all your support this year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
Okay, Council, um, next up, we've got Item 5.2, uh, which is the Cedar Sky Community Services Youth Strategy Update. And we are slightly ahead of schedule, but do we have that, those folks with us?
Hi, Council. Um, my name's Sydney Lyons from Cedar Sky Community Services. We are just getting our presenting team queued up, if you would, uh, allow us a moment for that.
Yep, no, no problem at all.
Thanks.
We're uncharacteristically slightly ahead. Are you waiting for other members to join you, Sydney? Okay.
That's, that's right, yes.
Why don't we take a quick four-minute, uh, break, you know, put us back on schedule for our 1:30 start to give you, uh, will give you time to get situated. So, Council, we're in recess. We'll see you at 1:30. Get underway here, I think. Um, is the team from Cedar Sky Community Services ready to go? Look at that. I'll take that as a positive.
Good afternoon, Armin. Do you hear me okay?
I can. Okay, let's, yes, we're, so we're back from recess. And, uh, joining us, uh, from Cedar Sky Community Services is Jay Russell. Maybe I'll let you introduce, take it away and introduce the rest of your, of who's joining you.
Thanks, Armin. It's a pleasure to be with you. I am looking on the list of speakers here for my co-presenter, Steve Mathias from Foundry. Um, he may be a couple of minutes late to the presentation, but, uh, I can get underway, um, with the first half of the presentation.
Okay, that, if, if that's, uh, that would be my preference, if that works with your, uh, presentation, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, yeah.
So, uh, great, thanks so much. It's, uh, it's a pleasure to be with you today. Uh, my name is Jay Russell. I'm the Executive Director of Cedar Sky Community Services. Uh, I will be shortly joined by Steve Mathias. This is the Executive Director, um, with Foundry BC to co-present with me today. Next slide. I've got Sydney Lyons, my amazing Youth Services Manager, running the slide today. So thank you, Sydney, for helping out today. I'm walking you through the agenda. Um, going to give a quick overview of, um, where things are at with Cedar Sky Community Services. Jumping down to an update, uh, on the Youth Services portfolio for 2019. Uh, I'll provide an update on the Buckley Housing Project, as well as the Foundry Project. And, um, passing the presentation over, um, to my friend and colleague, Steve Mathias, to give you an overview of the Foundry BC model, um, and then closing with the conversation around budget. Next slide. So for over 42 years, uh, Cedar Sky, uh, has been offering programs and services in the Cedar Sky Corridor. Every year, we offer over 40 programs and services, um, on a broad spectrum of supports from affordable housing, childcare, education, social supports, mental health services. In 2019, we served over 5,000 people in communities throughout the Cedar Sky Corridor. Next slide. And I want to share some impact, um, with you briefly, um, and some of the highlights for the agency, um, in the last year. Uh, our programs, as you can see, are in more demand than ever. We're seeing an average increase in our program usage by 13% year-over-year. Now, the numbers in front of you are taken from our performance reporting, which is, um, captured from July 1st, 2019 to June 31st of 2020. So some of these numbers, particularly, um, in the postnatal and prenatal wellness, as well as seniors' programs, show significant increases due to COVID-19, which is what we're seeing on a provincial trend as well. For example, some of our numbers are suggesting provincially that we're seeing a 30% increase in perinatal wellness supports needed for new moms in the province. Where some of our parenting programs spark, for example, with 600 families, um, involved throughout the year, strong start with a 26% increase. These numbers are just showing the number of families, um, that are in Squamish and new families that, um, are growing through the Cedar Sky Corridor. Next slide. Now, jumping into Youth Services for 2019. As many of you may know, Cedar Sky's been delivering new services in partnership with the district for over 20 years. In 2019, the Youth Center served just over 6,700 youth with a 35% increase from 2018. This totaled close to 600 unique individuals served. And I think we can all know that 2019, from a scope and, um, philosophical standpoint, was a pivotal year for youth services in community. Building on the understanding that we needed to replace an aging youth center and looking for ways to respond to a growing youth demographic. We were pleased to partner with the district and launch, uh, the Youth Strategy in 2019 alongside youth caregivers and providers to improve facilities, but also broaden programs for Squamish youth. So for Cedar Sky this year, it meant shifting from a place-based model of the youth center and activating and reaching more broadly into various neighborhood hubs around community. Through schools, parks, rec facilities, and the library, of course. We began to develop, uh, develop a hybrid model of both the place-based, that would eventually become the new youth center into more of a scattered approach. By mid-March, as you know, the Youth Center officially closed its doors. And at the same time, the nation declared a global pandemic with COVID-19. They were literally within weeks of each other. It was a tough time, for sure. Um, but as always, our team stepped up. Um, and in the midst of this challenge, offered a combination of virtual and in-person supports between April and September. We have some stats, um, noting that they offered 79 programs, 227 sessions for youth, and had over 1,000 program registrants, which is an amazing accomplishment in such a short amount of time. And then by June of 2020, we were pleased to receive news that Squamish had been selected, chosen to become one of eight communities selected to establish a Foundry Center to join a network of Foundry Centers across the province. Cedar Sky Community Service is proud to be the lead agency for Foundry, and Foundry's goal is to have 19 centers in the province by 2023. You know, for, for us, and I think the community, what's amazing with the Foundry model, um, is that it builds upon our core youth services model by offering additional supports in mental health, substance use services, primary care, sexual health, peer support. Essentially a one-stop shop of integrated professional, professional services for young people ages 12 to 24. Next slide, please. So this has been a year of reflection and refocus for those of us supporting youth in community. We have seen an increase in available space for youth. Jumping about 1,500 square feet, we will, with the new Youth Center, um, under Foundry. We've aligned and organized our work under the district's Youth Strategy and Foundry Service Models. And our goal is to continue building relationships to integrate all professional services for youth under one roof. All the while supporting and enhancing the additional local neighborhood hubs through outreach and complementary programs offered throughout Squamish community. Excellent. So giving you a sense in this next slide of where we are in the process. Um, a quick update on the Buckley Affordable Housing Build. Uh, we have selected, uh, Yellow Bridge Construction as the general contractor, uh, for the project, and workers are mobilizing on-site as we speak. We are planning a groundbreaking ceremony. This has been tricky. Um, I think we had great visions of, of this being, um, obviously an event of some sorts, but we're partnering in very close communication right now with Squamish Nation, um, around the groundbreaking. This will be one of the first official ceremonies, um, held, um, by our partners at Squamish Nation at an affordable housing build, and obviously, um, this is important to us to honor, uh, the land and ceremony and recognize the people and places that have come before us. Um, not only for the Affordable Housing Project, um, the significance of place, but also the services offered through Foundry. Um, and obviously additional, um, support services out of the housing project. Um, I look forward to including District Council, um, in the event, staff, um, youth caregivers and community, and, and all of the family of, uh, project partners in the event. So more to come in the near of that. A little bit more on the timeline in front of you. Uh, we've just completed our community engagement for the building design. Uh, you had included in your package today, uh, a PDF of, of the floor plan, and I'll be happy to take some questions about, uh, around that, uh, at the end of the presentation. But first and foremost, I want to thank some of you who participated in the town hall, the feedback opportunities around the building, um, schematic design. We had over 200 people participate in that, the town hall and consultation process. It was a great amount of feedback. Um, and shows a greater momentum around the project. Uh, the next phase of work will be recruiting for our youth and family advisory committees. These committees are key to the work at Foundry. Again, similar to the Youth Strategy, this is work for youth, by youth. There are folks that we're recruiting with lived experience, families with lived experience, who are pivotal in not only the design and scope of the service model, but they're also involved in hiring, um, and real planning of the, of the site and services, um, into the coming years. In the new year, we will also be participating, um, in a corridor-wide communities that care survey distributed to just over 2,800 students ages 11 to 18 in the Cedar Sky Corridor. We see this as a great opportunity to capture and gather data. Some youth to obviously better understand needs as we're developing the service models under Foundry, but particularly right now in light of the pandemic. Um, we know that a lot of youth are struggling. Um, this is, this is a challenging time for everyone. Um, but it's a good time for us to touch base and gather some of that data so that we can really speak to what, what the needs are um, as we open the doors, um, in the coming years. We're also going to reengage the Family Capital, Foundry Capital Campaign Committee in the new year. We put the campaign on hold early in the spring in light of COVID, but now have hired our Resource Development Director, um, at Cedar Sky Community Services to lead that initiative, and she will be launching the campaign in the new year. And then in this coming year, alongside the Capital Campaign, next year's focus will really be focusing on the development of the service model for the center and getting ready to open our doors in the spring of 2022. So we've got a lot of work on our hands. Um, but core to this work is obviously engaging the community around this new model of youth services. Bringing youth services under one model essentially called Foundry. This is a fundamental shift, um, in how the community has approached youth services and, to be quite honest, our relationships with youth, um, and youth services. This is change. This is challenging. Uh, it's new for some community members. Um, and today, and, and ongoing, as, as we have more conversations around the center, you know, my message to you today is I want council and this community in particular to be as proud of this project as we are. So that's why I've asked Steve Mathias to join us today, um, to speak to you a little bit more about the Foundry model, its importance, what it's meant to communities, what you can hope to see in the coming years, um, as we really begin to, to shape and, and form the model and, and offer these amazing services for youth in our community. So I will shift it over to Steve if he's on the call. Um, and then I will come back and, and talk a little bit more towards the end. Is Steve? There he is. I will pass it over to you, Steve. Thank you for joining us.
Uh, thanks for having, uh, me, Council. I really appreciate being here today. My name is, uh, Steve Mathias, and sorry, I'm not used to using Cisco, uh, so I'm, I'm usually a, a Microsoft Teams and Zoom guy, so apologies if, um, I, uh, I blunder. So, uh, really, Foundry, um, it came out of a, a, a model that we had seen in several other countries, uh, in Australia and Ireland in particular. And, um, what, what was, uh, recognized as really important was the, the idea of having a branded model of service, uh, that young people could identify wherever they lived. Um, and so that, uh, instead of, um, having a, a service called Child Youth Mental Health or, uh, Sexually Transmitted, uh, Disease Clinic, the young people could find the services and the supports they needed in a place that was relatively anonymous. And so with, uh, quite a bit of work, uh, with youth groups from around the province, we developed the Foundry brand, which was launched in 2015, 16, and has been in the province now for four years. Uh, next slide, please. And so our vision is to transform access. What we know really is that, that at the heart of the challenge for young people and families is less about stigma and more about accessing care. Um, we've done a tremendous job in this country of identifying, uh, ways of combating stigma. But now that young people are looking for help, what we know is that the services where they turn to haven't necessarily been designed to accommodate young people before they're really struggling with their illness or function. So we haven't designed services to support young people after they've broken up with a girlfriend, or after they've been bullied, or when they've had an argument with their parents and need to come in for help. So we haven't really created services for upstream and early intervention. And so one of the things that we felt was really critical, and, and we've seen emerge, is this model of bringing all the services that a young person might want to access in one place, both health and social services, in a way that makes it very easy for them to navigate and also supports their care providers, both professional and family, to help them in times of need and identify the services that they may, uh, they may require. And really unabashedly, I'm a North Shore resident, so I'm just down the road from Squamish. Um, I have three daughters, ages nine, 11, and 13. And what we have said to folks is that we would like to see British Columbia be the best place in the world for young people to grow up. And we know we have a long way to go, but certainly in order for this dream or this vision to come true, we need to ensure that young people can get help when they need it. And the, without waiting, without confusion, uh, without long lineups. And that's really been a big part of what Foundry, uh, is. Next slide, please. And so we started off with this idea of creating social capital. The idea of creating spaces that every community would want to have, that they would view as, uh, important and, uh, critical to their infrastructure. Um, running right alongside community centers and hockey rinks, uh, the idea that a Foundry Center is a space for young people to get the help that they need. They are tailor-made to the needs of the local community, uh, understanding that each community will bring in various resources. But what has been really, uh, I think astounding from this has been the response from all of the organizations, the nonprofit organizations, the municipalities, the health authorities, the child youth mental health offices, to come together and staff up these centers and work together so that there is warm handovers, uh, whenever a young person comes in. And so these spaces work because the families and young people support the, their creation, their code, their design. And when they open, they see themselves in the space, uh, and it's a reflection of the local, uh, community. We, uh, make sure that every community offers certain core services, as Jay alluded to, and that is our job. My, uh, I'm, I'm Executive Director of Foundry, and I have a team of 60 people that works with the various communities. That works with the various communities to open these spaces and then once they're open, to make sure that they meet certain criteria. So that young people continue to have access to those spaces. This is Foundry Ridge Meadows, which was our most recent opening. And as you can see there, it's supposed to be a welcoming space and a place where young people walk in and are comfortable and all the surveys and the feedback that we've. Sought from young people and their families really does reinforce that these spaces are exactly. We would be included in the new platform. Well, what turned out was that as they went through the province and around community after community to hear what was working and what wasn't working. In the communities where the Foundry spaces existed or communities where people had heard about Foundry, it was very positive. And so the government, the Ministry of Mental Health and Addictions, when they came out with their pathway to hope. Actually baked in Foundry as one of the cornerstone initiatives for the model. Seeing this really as a tremendous way to bring in not only the physical and the mental health resources that a young person needs, but also the social resources that they need. Into one space. And so as part of the pathway to hope, it's been indicated that we would see expansion over the course of the next 10 years. And my hope, quite honestly, is that we get to 40 or 50 centers around the province. But Squamish is one of the first 19, which is really exciting. Next slide. So we have looked at the age of registration when young people come in, we collect data on every young person who walks through our door. So we have a huge data set. And you'll see a little bit more of that in a minute, but this is an example of data from January to December of 2019. 19, where we saw close to 10,000 young people. And you can see that really this is, and the group tends to change a little bit in terms of where that peak depending on the community. We would expect in Squamish that that peak would be closer to 17, 18. Given the age of the community, but certainly what we see is more and more of the younger teenagers coming through the door, which is really exciting. But this goes to show you our brand and our model really appeals to this young group of young people. The group frankly, that. Many of us are concerned about at this moment with the pandemic, but also with just this is situation around anxiety and depression. In schools and in colleges and also that we have a significant group of young people who are struggling to access education and training. And employment opportunities. And so we really want to make sure that these folks have a sense of where to go for help. Next slide. Where Foundry is becoming synonymous with partnership. The idea that it's a multi-sector partnership and collaboration. So it's not a top-down approach. It's really about the local co-ops effectively that are created, the service co-ops. In some communities like Kelowna, for instance, they have 20 different organizations working together under one roof. And so you can really see how what has been viewed historically as many doors of service can all start to collapse into one easily recognized space for young people. With links out into the community, either through outreach, municipal outreach or health outreach. And so that young people are connected with where they are, either in the schools or in the community centers. And if there's concerns, they can be directed back to the center. Similarly, when a young person walks in and they may feel disenfranchised, they can be linked back into their community and supported. Much quicker than has been the historic in this area. 170 partners, I think, is actually conservative estimate of the number of organizations that we now have working across our 11 sites and soon to be 19. The way the funding works is that the province of British Columbia. Provides a one-time capital grant of $800,000 and then annualized 700,000 moving forward. So up to effectively in the first 10 years, $7 million to address the needs of the young people in the community. And what we find is that in most of our communities, there are a lot of nonprofit organizations providing service that when they come together. Create an in-kind basket of somewhere between a million and $2 million in existing resources. We were shocked when we did this, we looked at this in Campbell River, which is a relatively small community. They had close to a million and a half dollars in income and resources that were in the the community in different corners, different pockets that all came together in one space. And then this is also something that really triggers the interest of donors and foundations, philanthropists who are concerned about their young people and want to contribute. And so this has been something that we have done through many years, but we've believed in fundraising for this cause. And have been quite successful when doing that and supporting the local communities to find philanthropists to come forward. Next slide. So we're very proud to say that we've had over 18,000, almost 19,000 unique youth supported by our services. This graph, I know it's a little bit hard to read, but gives you a sense of the breakdown of the different services that young people access as they come through our door. You'll note that the walk-in counseling, which is the fourth bar at close to 12%. Is a new service in this province and only Foundry Centers and very select few health authority spots. Provide what is called walk-in counseling, which is that idea that a young person can get counseling on the same day or within 24 hours of presenting for help. This has been shown in in studies to really reduce the wait time per service because we're helping them early. And also to reduce some emergency room visits. This, this is just to show you though, the young people come in with various needs and most young people will come back from more than one service. Next slide, please. Finally, this is the only technical slide I'll put on. But this is what's called the Kessler Psychological Distress Scale. And this gives you a sense of how distressed young people are when they come into our center. It's actually quite significant that close to 90% of young people, when they come in and are asked how distressed they are on their first assessment. Actually have anywhere from moderate to very high levels of distressed. Close to 50% are considered to have high levels of distress. Well, this is, it's, it's critical to have this conversation because there is an unmet need. Out there and we, we all know it. And this is a way of getting ahead of that, that level of distress. Recognizing that this is an issue for the province, not only in the communities where centers are, we've launched Foundry Virtual. Which is a virtual service that offers many of the services that we have in centers, but virtually. And in, in June, we launched it with a new staff and since then we've helped close to 700 young people. Access walk-in counseling as well. And so what you can start to see is how the system can organize itself vertically with centers on the ground, supporting young people in their communities. But also being present after hours or at times where young people can't make it into a center. So I'll stop there. I'm not sure if there is time for questions. I'll just add this. Yeah. Thank you for this last slide. When we've asked young people where they would have gone if they hadn't come to Foundry, almost 44% will say nowhere. Another 22% will say family or friends. So 66% of young people will either go nowhere or see family and friends, i.e. non-professional supports when they need help. And so we're excited that this model seems to be shifting that and seems to be getting more upstream and really de-stigmatizing help-seeking. One young person once said in Penticton. You know, I think what we do need to do is not de-stigmatize mental health, but de-stigmatize help-seeking. Recognize that the struggle is real for young people and, and that we just normalize that when we have a Foundry Center. Penticton is interesting because they're very similar in size to Squamish and they typically serve between 700 and 1,000 young people a year. And I think that that's safe to say in terms of what we would be seeing in Squamish. Which is a fairly large number of young people supported by this model. And certainly I think a much improved model of care than what has existed historically. I'll just stop there and answer any questions that you may have.
Steve, if we wouldn't mind holding our questions to the end, Norman, we just have a couple more slides to get through and then we'll open it up to the floor. So bear with me for a little bit here as I go through a little bit of the numbers. As Steve alluded to, thank you, Steve. That was, that was amazing. It was great. I imagine for council to see some of the numbers. And really some of the, the work that has gone into, into this Foundry model. So as Steve mentioned, that the initial capital contribution from Foundry is 800,000, an amazing gift to community. And so right now, today's figures as we're getting closer into quantity survey and understanding what the construction costs and needs will be. To build the tenant improvements inside the Buckley Affordable Housing Build. We're closing in on about a $2 million project. About 940,000 of that has been confirmed. And so next year's capital campaign will be kicking off a $1 million. Support and pledge to the community for support to make this project a reality. So looking at additional funding support from giving capital grants, we have an application in that. Been told they're on hold in terms of giving communities news due to election and COVID. So hopefully we'll hear soon whether or not we're successful in our gaining capital grant. Mr. Blackcomb Foundation has also shown interest as becoming a supporter as well as other corporate and private donations, donors. And I would be remiss to say that the community involvement in a project like this would be significant. This is a real opportunity to galvanize the community. I think I've used that term. With council before and, and really gain some interest and engagement from a fund development standpoint and an ownership standpoint. For this facility from community. Next slide. And then giving you a sense of what we're looking at building into the first year of operating. As Steve alluded to, this is a combination of co-located and integrated services that make up the operating budget for a Foundry Center. And keeping in line with what Steve is saying is that we're looking at requiring about a $1.8 to $2 million healthy budget to get into our first year of operating. And contributions coming from other funders and donations that bottom line would be the CATS Foundation. They've been a significant partner in this Foundry journey up to date. Foundry BC, obviously the net new services of 700,000 coming annualized for Foundry. And then partner contributions, Steve talking, speaking to the 170 partners around the province. So here in Squamish, I've mentioned to you before, as, as part of our Foundry Partner Table. We have Ministry of Children and Family, Vancouver Coastal Health, Divisions of Cedar Sky Family Practice, Squamish Nation, the School District 48. And then obviously I'd be remiss without speaking to the significance of our partnership from the district of Squamish and our youth services portfolio. You can see by this slide, some of the work that we've been working with Tim and Natasha on to begin to get a sense of what we're proposing here is. Essentially about a 50% increase to youth services budget into the next two years. We've certainly been proud to support the community for the past 10 years with our current budget, no additional cost increases to the district to this point. And I've been super proud of our team for being able to continue to deliver effective programs without limited budget because we always find efficiencies. But this is a new program model with greater funding needs. And additional funds will support increases to the hours of operations and more importantly, the professional staff. To keep up with our growing demands of services and the complex needs of youth as Steve alluded to earlier. I'm also very well aware that this has been a challenging year for all services across the district. But the end of the day, the needs of youth are commensurate with those challenges. We need healthier options for youth. Physical, emotional and social supports. But I have to be clear, at the end of the day, you're a partner in this project. This entire project would not be possible if it wasn't for the land the district donated. And the lease we've entered in with the district to make this all possible. But I'm looking to council to bring the necessary support to ensure that we're delivering the right services that are needed now. Before I end, I obviously want to thank Natasha and Tim for their support in getting us to where we are today. Obviously Gary Butts and I see you on the call as well. From a planning standpoint, thank you all for your time today and Steve and I will take your questions now.
Thank you very much for the presentation. There we go. Thank you to whoever brought that down. So council questions. I see councillor Race to start us off.
Thank you. I'm just curious how you, how you make youth aware of this facility, especially at an early stage. How do you market it in the community, do you like?
Yeah, great question. So what we have found, believe it or not, the number one way, because we've asked young people, how did you find out about Foundry today? The number one way is, is actually word of mouth, which is really exciting for us. Word of mouth was number one. Number two was family. Number three was school counselor. So we work with Children's Hospital. And so Children's Hospital runs our online presence. We have a very strong social media presence. So as part of this, there will be a Foundry Squamish. Facebook account, Foundry Squamish, Instagram account. And there will also be a strong push in the schools to, for everyone in the schools to understand that Foundry exists. In some communities, they actually have busloads of kids tour through the facility in September as a way of breaking the ice. When Foundry North Shore opened, they had over 300 people and food trucks come. It was a celebration. It's the kind of thing that you just typically don't see when you have a mental health facility open. And so we've kind of turned it on its head and had a lot more fun with it. But you know, I think at the end of the day, word of mouth and my daughter, who's a student at Argyle High School. When you walk by and they've got their ongoing sort of announcements on the television in terms of resources and. Out there to help them, there's Foundry North Shore that comes up on the screen. It's part of their orientation package. So eventually councillor Race gets into the water. And that's, that's really our intention with this.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Penningill, followed by Mayor Elliott.
Yeah, thank you. There's, there's a lot to like about this project. I, I am a little bit. I guess from my mind though, when we started off on this, the goal was some sort of youth hub, which I saw as a little more. Sort of rec focus, like sort of I imagine kids. And what I heard from the youth at the engagements I went to was, you know, places like to play pool and watch movies and hang out and do those kinds of casual things. You know, play music and those sorts of activities happened a lot at the, the old youth center. And Foundry seems to be much more focused on clinical services and you know, I'm not in a position to. Assess the need for that, although I just otherwise understand there's generally a high need for this sort of thing. But it does seem to solve a different problem than we set out to address with this facility. And it seems to leave that original sort of, what I had in mind, youth hub issue unaddressed. And so I'm wondering, and maybe this is partly a question for staff. How do we see that addressing that kind of more general youth hub issue? Or do we think this negates that need? And I think related to that, just looking at the budget. You know, significant increase in funding to my mind implies the district getting much more involved in funding clinical youth services. Which traditionally isn't a municipal role. And you know, again, I'm not necessarily opposed to stepping into areas where we need to, where there are gaps. If that's what our community really needs, but it does seem to be a fairly significant change in direction from what we've done in the past. I'm just wondering if staff may speak to that a bit.
Chris, can I address that a little bit? Would that be okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I totally agree with you. I totally agree with you. There's so much of what you say, which I agree with. And what we have found is that there's, when we open these centers, there is a shift somewhat in terms of some of the activities that that can be offered. It's not that a pool table can't exist with a ping pong table or what have you. But it is about having a multipurpose space that can be used for multiple reasons, whether it's yoga. Or a Dungeons and Dragons club, or a anger management group, or a movie night. So a lot of those still happen at Foundry when the doors open. But the idea though, is that the role, that you know, the critical role of social services is to engage young people potentially. Who do have needs around their healthcare, but aren't aware of them or are feeling stigma or aren't getting help because they're, they're uncomfortable doing so. And need to be linked in through a social service. And the social services also help young people reengage in their community and link back into their community. And so we have wellness programs where, you know, workers, youth workers, outreach workers are supporting young people. are supporting young people to go for hikes because there's a value in hikes, there's therapeutic value. So what we're trying to do is really blur the line between health and rec and really recognize that this is a holistic approach to wellness that we're taking. And the way we do that is we build this out together instead of saying, okay, this is a rec facility and this is a clinic. This is really about a center where we bring these together and we work together to create a space that really encourages youth wellness. And so someone, for instance, who might be worried about a young person who's depressed, like myself as a psychiatrist, could say to a young person, hey, did you know that we have a group that goes for a hike every Thursday afternoon? Would you join them? Or you have an interest in Dungeons and Dragons, would you like to go to the Dungeons and Dragons group on Thursday? So it's really a bidirectional flow and it's, I think, the way of the future in terms of how we support young people when it comes to wellness.
Thanks, Steve. Natasha, did you want to jump in? I can also speak to that too.
Yeah, thanks to the chair. And I think Tim and Jay and I all probably have similar things to say to that. And thanks, Steve, also for that very eloquent description of how this works together. The thing I just wanted to add is that this very much is still the vision being a social casual space where people can come together and have opportunities to have that unstructured time. And, you know, we've heard from the engagement we did leading up to the youth strategy that a big missing piece for youth in Squamish is an absence of places to be that youth feel often like they have nowhere to go. And that is part of what's, what we want to address in the vision of the youth hub. The other thing maybe I'll just add to that is that Tim and Jay and the team have been, as Jay spoke about earlier, doing this neighborhood hub, sort of hub and spoke model and creating those spaces also not just at this one center as a sort of draw for, for young people to come to, but also in, at the neighborhood level that's more accessible, maybe more casual and less of a, less barriers to, to get there. And so creating those social unstructured spaces that folks have the opportunity for programming in their neighborhoods as well.
Thanks, Natasha. Just the one thing I would add is, Chris, I, I want you to know we, we are not doing away with our, with the good work that has taken us to this point. We're only wanting to build on what we have accomplished to this date. And that's building on the foundation of what we have as our core in Squamish. And Steve alluded to this, every community will have its unique opportunities to build upon the Foundry model. And our core and our unique opportunity has been our youth center and our youth hub work to this point. And I, I truly believe that this is an enhancement to our existing approach to youth services. And I'll just, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, everybody, for those replies. Mayor Elliott?
I think I wanted to follow up on councillor Penningill's other question, which is what is driving the growth in our youth services budget from 2020 to 2023? What are we finding? It's a legitimate question around not having the province download things onto us that, that we really should be advocating for them to pay for. So I am curious how our budget doubles in two years to that half a million dollar level and what's driving that?
Driving that, Mayor Elliott, if I may, is, is our need to fall in step with population growth and inflation. The youth services budget to this point with Cedar Sky hasn't seen an increase in over 10 years. And knowing that the timing is now and we have an opportunity, as I said, we've been, we've been developing and having impacted new services to this point. The timing is now, in our view, to be able to invest in a significant way to ensure that we're meeting the demand. So it's additional operating hours on that existing envelope of hours that were in our current youth center. To Natasha's point, it's an ability to move deeper into those neighborhood hub and spoke models, whether it's activating at the library alongside keeping those hours of operation open at the Foundry Center. And then obviously, as we're seeing the needs increase in terms of complexity, whether it's eating disorders, gender identification, complexity that Steve alluded to, it's increasing the notion of our professional supports of a youth outreach worker. And really it's, it's a start of a conversation with you and council, Mayor Elliott, to begin to bring our youth services portfolio in step with the growing demand in the community for youth needs.
Thank you for that. And I know we just got our, our restart funding grant from the province. And, and I know there's space outside of the youth center and Foundry for outdoor space. And so are we thinking about how we might want to future-proof that outdoor space and make it usable sort of more year-round through a covered structure or something that enables our community to continue to access the outdoors? At the youth center?
Adjacent to, like the coverage?
Right adjacent to, so that, you know, it's, it's not a huge space, right? It's about 1,500 square feet of multipurpose and kitchen and that sort of thing. But we are an outdoor community. And so I wonder about how we use that courtyard and can we cover a portion of it so that kids can go in and make a hot chocolate? But then they might want to sit outside in the shade when it's hot or, you know, it might just be a rainy spring day, but it's not awful to be outside as long as you're not in the rain. So I wondered if we've, we've given some thought to how to program that outdoor space so that pandemic or not, it can be used year-round.
There's a slight overhang for winter time, Mayor Elliott, for, for kids to congregate with, with this initial proposed set of drawings. The outdoor space, it would be seasonal as the way things are proposed right now. So any additional covered space would, as you, to your point, would have to come from additional funding or grant sources. But it could be depending on what could be approved, if it was a fixed or movable space, essentially.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson, and then I'll come back to Penningill. We are running a little late on, on time, council, so we appreciate your focus. Thank you, councillor Anderson.
Thank you. I hope my question maybe has some relevance. I'll try it out. It's really about program partners in the community that maybe have some interest. And I'm thinking about our community forest and our municipal parks. I believe Mr. Mathias has mentioned a program, a Foundry program at Maple Ridge. Some years ago, I was involved with the university research force there, a program for youth at risk and also folks who are developmentally disabled or doing work in the forest, pruning, juvenile spacing, chainsaw safety training. We have a local manager of our municipal climbing park, John Harvey, who brings youth into the park to do vegetation management now and then. My general question is, is there a role for these types of community partners to offer outdoor activities? Is there a kind of a need or a niche for that type of community partner? Say a community forest or a municipal park for doing outdoor work, if you like?
I think absolutely. Yeah, there, that, that could be something that could be offered. That's a great point, councillor Anderson.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to councillor Stoner. Go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair, thank you so much for the presentation. It's always lovely to give an update of all the work that's going on. Following on the mayor and councillor Penningill's question, I may have missed this on your slide, but I'm just curious if the province currently provides any funding towards the youth services program budget? Or I think there was a $200,000 line item there that was under the Foundry BC. So if that's just for establishing Foundry and there is no provincial budget at the moment for the youth services program?
That is very true, councillor Stoner. So in the initial years leading up to opening, Foundry provides seed funding in the first year, 200,000. Second year for us will be five and then for, for opening, 700,000. And so I, you know, I should obviously add the caveat too, that these are, these are unionized employees that work for Cedar Sky Community Services. And typically, under the collective agreement, our quote-unquote funded programs provincially would obviously have, under the collective agreement, wage lifts associated with those positions. So, you know, to your, to your point earlier, Mayor Elliott, that it is not necessarily the notion of downloading at this point, but the portfolio of youth services and the positions that are under youth services with the district are unionized positions that up until this point have not been falling in step with our commitments under the collective agreement. So part of the additional requests in our operating jitter are obviously to, to ensure that we're falling in step with our requirements of those percentage increases year-over-year.
Okay, councillor Penningill, I saw your, your hand earlier, I believe.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to get clarification because, and I don't want to give the wrong impression about opposition to Foundry or anything like that. It does seem to me though, like a change in a direction and maybe a very worthwhile one, but I just want to understand what, what that means. And because when I sort of eyeball the floor plan, it looks like we've gone from, I think the slide said about 4,200 square feet and, you know, a largely programmable youth space at the old center, which I realized had to be torn down. And then this new facility, it looks like give or take around 1,800-ish square feet. And so I understand the point of we may move to more of a neighborhood hub model or so on. But are we thinking because of Foundry, you know, that 1,800 or whatever is really all we need? Or are we sort of expecting in our real estate facilities master plan, we may see some additional line items and stuff to address some of the floor space we haven't provided here? And I'm just trying to wrap my head around that.
May I take a stab at that? Through the chair, that this is a good question and I don't think that we are anticipating that the recreation space needs of youth are going to decrease. And so certainly we are not trying to sort of shrink youth programming. I think what we're trying to do, if I'm following your line of thinking correctly, is in addition to expanding into neighborhoods and activating other spaces through partnership opportunities and other district facilities, like we've, like we've, we've been speaking about, I think there's also an opportunity to better integrate existing programming on, on a footprint. So the Foundry space has clinical, social, emotional types of supports in, in a bigger footprint, but the, the recreation space is not sort of carved out being done on its own. Those programs are going to be integrated into the workflow of the other, of the other programs as well. So it's not a shrinking, it's a better interoperability.
So Mr. Hoskins, would you like to chime in on this one?
Yeah, just to add a point, a strong theme we heard out of the youth strategy was bring programs to youth. So with the youth hub, with the Foundry, creating space that we can bring arts into, that we can bring recreation into, library services into is fantastic. But with the hub model, it's also been out into the community, into the schools, into different facilities like the library, Brennan Park, et cetera, parks and putting on programs there or trail programs like, like we heard from councillor Anderson. So there are opportunities out there. And although we've focused quite a bit today on the clinical park, there is a huge part around the youth strategy that there will be alignment with the youth services contract to deliver on the youth strategy and make sure that we're here, we're committed to and fulfilling what we heard the youth ask for.
Thank you. Councillor Race, did I see your? Nope, we're good. Okay, I'll just add my two bits. Thank you so much for the, for the presentation, everyone involved. I think this, this project is, is, is important one for our community. It will have a positive impact. I appreciate the holistic approach and the sort of intermingling of the, of the services and the purposes of the services. I, I do hear from my colleagues around the table and I share their concerns around the, the potential for downloading. This is a subject that we're kind of all regularly faced through all the different facets of our municipal government. So, and I think that it'll be, there's still work to do on our, on our part for advocacy to make sure that we keep these pieces as untangled and as undownloaded, if that's a word, as we, as we go forward to make sure that these programs can be successful and without having these jurisdictional sort of standoffs. So thank you so much for, for the work. I look forward to seeing this come to fruition. And yeah, it will, it'll be up and, up and running in, in, in no time, I'm sure. So thank you, thank you very much, everybody, and for your time today.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Councillor, we ran right through our five-minute scheduled five-minute break, but maybe we'll take five just now to get, to allow the next presenters to, to get ready and we can do a bit of a stretch. So we're back at, we'll call it 3:30, 3:31 for the procurement policy portion. So we're in recess.
2:30, 2:30.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm in a time warp provided by this one specific clock. So yes, we're talking five minutes, not an hour and five minutes. Okay, thanks, everybody. We're in recess. We'll see you back shortly. Okay, everybody, welcome back to Committee of the Whole for November 24th. We're on to item six dash one, the procurement policy. We've got Ms. Boxrod and Mr. Jeffrey with us to run us through procurement policy. Before we, I turn it over to staff, I think it comes to the recommendation that involves incorporating some feedback as follows. So I'll, how I'd like to do that is I'll have staff keep track of the feedback they hear. And at the end, we'll need to sort of summarize it as we contemplate that motion. So I don't know who on, on your team wants to take on that role, but that's how I'm expecting this to, to go. So with that, over to staff to run us through the procurement policy, please.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you for the, giving me the time to present an updated procurement policy. You know, our goal is obviously to, as was, as per the report, is that the committee, the whole received the November 24th, 2020 report from Financial Services regarding the draft policy that start bringing policy for the Senate Special Council meeting. And we incorporate any feedback we hear today. So I'm looking forward to this discussion. I've wanted to have this conversation for about a year and a half. So we're finally here, which is fantastic. So this is kind of the discussion topics I want to go over, a bit of background on the policy and the development and how we got to where we are. The financial controls we've been implementing over the last several months since Heather come on board. Been about the digital procurement process that we've been implementing as well, as well as the forthcoming officer and delegation bylaws. It's a bit of a heads up of, you know, what we're thinking and, you know, looking for feedback on that obviously as well. And then I want to get to the, the fun stuff, the social or strategic procurement. So the interim policy, as you probably were aware, was adopted back in 2018 by April. And it was the intent at the time was just to, it was going to be on an interim basis. So after that, a consultant was engaged and, you know, they come up with a number of recommendations on the procurement function at the district. We included that report in, in the package that was provided to council. So one of the first recommendations was a procurement position, which I happen to fill, still here, loving it. And I started in April 2019. And then it brings us to now. So we're at the place where we've got a draft policy ready for the county to make it more of a, not so interim, but more of a permanent policy. So getting into the actual policy development, so procurement in the public sector is pretty complex. There's a lot of rules, regulations and treaties and stuff that we need to comply with. You know, there's different contract formats, there's the common law, the community charter, all that kind of fun stuff. So we already have a framework, a pretty complex framework in which we operate. One of the things we want to try and do when we're developing policy in the procurement space is to keep it as simple as possible and not add an extra layers of burden that we, you know, already bear in the public space. So there's enough in the trade treaties to deal with and I might go through those a bit later if we've got time and there's interest to do it. So the financial controls that we've been working on and implementing in our Unit 4 So the financial controls that we've been working on and implementing in our Unit 4 ERP Business World system is purchase orders in UBW. We haven't turned on the procurement module in UBW. That was one of the things that we've been working on and want to do. So that's being rolled out as we speak. We are onboarding engineering first to do quite a lot of the purchase orders. So it's encapsulating that whole procure-to-pay process. We want to, you know, create a PO, we want to receive that invoice, and we want to pay that invoice with all, with the proper controls and approvals. So being in a digital system like that, everything is auditable, everything's traceable. We have good oversight and insight into what's actually going on. And it gives us a lot more stronger ability to manage scope creep in contracts. So if, you know, sometimes you can get change ordered to death, but now we've got the tools in place where we can keep an eye on that and monitor that. And of course, there's the reporting piece. So, you know, as Roland and Heather have probably been showcasing, is we're doing quarterly reporting now. So that's something we can incorporate along with our procurements and our, you know, contract awards. So the proposed forthcoming officer and delegation bylaw is going to include more than just the procurement piece. This is just kind of what the current levels are and what we're proposing to do for items that are in a proposed budget. So that's something to consider. We can talk about that further if we want to. I just want to mention that it's pretty hard to talk about procurement without just highlighting some of these trade treaties to just give you a bit of an oversight on them. This trade treaty here, the U.S. Partnership Trade Agreement, this has been in effect for about 10 years now. And these trade treaty thresholds have not changed. So, you know, for us, it's not too bad, 75,000. We have to go and publicly post our bid opportunities for goods and services. I mean, it's a lot better than the provincial government, you know, at $10,000. You know, they can spend $25,000 making a $10,000 decision. So these have been stuck at this number for 10 years. And there's no, nothing that I'm aware of that those numbers are going to change. So they really do put a lot of scrutiny on us and how we do our procurements and how, you know, publicly exposed we are in our procurement processes. The new Canada, the new Canada Free Trade Agreement, it is a bit better. The thresholds are a bit higher for us. They did incorporate a CPI or inflationary factor. So these numbers do go up every year. But because we have the NWPTA, we're kind of stuck at these thresholds and dealing with stuff that's in those procurements. So now to get onto more of the fun stuff and the stuff I'd like to spend a bit of time talking about is social procurement. So, or as it's been known to number of years in the private sector, is strategic procurement. So our traditional procurement model is, you know, we want high quality, you go for low bid. And then, you know, the supplier wants a high profit margin, they want revenue, they want a low cost of production. Where we try to go with the social procurement piece is we want to align more with community value. We want to balance those scales. We don't want to tip them in one direction over the other. And this kind of graphic illustrates that nicely for us. So some of the things that we're looking at is if we read through the draft policies, environmental considerations are pretty high on the list. And, you know, the draft policy in its current state is trying to link back to these documents that are important to council, the OCP, the strategic plan, the climate emergency declaration, you know, the action plan. So, you know, the desired outcomes is we want to reduce the emissions. We want to reduce or raise waste. And we want to consider environmentally sensitive areas, wild lives. But, you know, we also want to maximize those social and economic goals as well. So just to give a kind of a snapshot of some of the stuff I've done in this space, one of my last procurements at the Kowachin Valley Regional District was for mattress recycling. And in that procurement, we used our evaluated criteria, the evaluated criteria, 30 points out of 100 were around social procurement piece. One was a social benefit and the other was an environmental factor. So weighed quite heavily in the decision-making process. 30% of the decision-making was based around those requirements. And, you know, it was the direction we were going in the Kowachin before I got to Squamish. And one of the reasons I wanted to come to Squamish is this is what I was getting the impression that was very important to, you know, council and how we wanted to do our procurements here. I kind of just want to touch on briefly what we're doing and have been doing around GHG emissions. We have been putting in a criteria, most of our RFPs, around 10 points around GHG emissions and reductions. So we can do it and we have been doing it even on things like cell phones. We've got two big projects coming up, hopefully for a new Public Works building and a new Townless Fire Hall, which is going to give us a lot of opportunity to do stuff in the social procurement space. So my friends at the good old village of Cumberland, very similar community to Squamish, lot smaller though, maybe 4,000 people living in Squamish, I mean, in Cumberland. They were an early adopter of social procurement. My friend Sandra Hamilton worked closely with the village of Cumberland to adopt the social procurement framework. And one of the things they did on two of their projects that are named here is the new bike lane project that they did in Cumberland. It was basically a highway into town with no shoulders. And, you know, a lot of the mountain bikers ride up to the trails and they, you know, it was busy road, et cetera. But what they, the social piece they did in that procurement to, you know, put bike lanes in was to create new trails in the forest there as well. So that was kind of a spin-off for a social benefit that was incorporated into procurement. Well, it's a big stormwater project they did a couple of years ago. They offered local living wage job opportunities, you know, commitments to training and financial support to a non-profit, which was, they actually built some ramps at a bike park, which, you know, was quite heavily used. It is a young community like Squamish, so, you know, a lot of kids are out there riding their bikes. So this work here around the food procurement, you know, Sarah could speak to this more, and I'm sure those who sit on the regional district are quite aware of the regional procurement policy and pledge. So we're hoping to embed a lot of that food procurement stuff within, you know, our procurement practices and getting those desired outcomes that we're looking for. And then my friend Lorraine in Sanage, they've been doing it for a number of years. And I mean, this is kind of how it can look. They've incorporated in all their RFPs and RFQs and attenders. You know, they've got reporting mechanisms. They've got a target for how much local food procurement they want in their opportunities. So it's, again, another example of something that we can do in the procurement world that affects what we do in districts. So the next steps is if, you know, after we get feedback from the COWR is to bring it policy to the next special council meeting is to look at incorporating some of those thresholds in the officer and delegation bylaw. We've also developed a working group to develop strategies, how we go about achieving these policy objectives. So that's made up with economic development, planning and engineering, of course, and myself. So again, coming back to the goal, goal today, any questions? So I'll stop sharing now.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm going to start with Mayor Elliott, followed by Counselor Stoner, Race, Anderson, Penningill.
Thank you, Chair. I'm so excited, Mr. Jeffrey, that we're having this conversation.
Me too.
This is so great. And I know because we know that procurement and strategic procurement can really help us accelerate our goals around climate action and social justice. And so this is absolutely a direction I want to go. I'm curious, in the delegation with the CAO, a delegation authority up to 200,000 plus with an asterisk, but I couldn't figure out what the asterisk meant to define.
Yeah, so if you look at the report, the asterisk is supposed to define the, any procurements over 200,000 plus would be approved or signed off by the CAO. Was basically the asterisk is a note saying the council's already approved within the budget. They've already looked at it in the budget, so they've already approved it once. There's not really a need for it to come back a second time. This is quite common in a lot of, you know, unis or local governments is, you know, you look at it once, you approve it in a budget, then it's up to staff to go and run a procurement process and award a contract.
Fair. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't, she can do anything she wants outside the financial plan and let us know later. So that's good. I was curious, the definition of a living wage is kept actually quite general. And my understanding is that they're developed quite specifically for the local area, right? So like the living wage in Vancouver wouldn't apply here. And so I wondered if that was a best practice, leaving that definition a little bit loose? Or whether we would form that up to make it Squamish context specific?
Yeah. Our thinking is we do want to form it up a bit and make it Squamish specific. It's hard getting an actual number for Squamish, like we're looking at Lower Mainland. And I think they, he chartered a report a couple of years ago to council and they used a living wage, which was kind of a mix of what it was in the Lower Mainland and somewhere further up the seat of sky. So it is still all around that $20 an hour mark, last time I looked. So that's something we can be a lot more specific on because I think we do need to define it a little bit better. It's usually the same when we do procurement contracts around CPI increases. You've got to specify which CPI you're talking about, which area, so.
Okay. My other question is, we have, we outline the value of procurement and the bid process. There's amount 75,000 to just under 200,000 for construction contracts only, and then 75,000 and higher for all other contracts except construction contracts. And I'm wondering if you could just, or council and the community outline why we make that distinction at those dollar amounts?
Okay. They align with the trade treaties. That's what we're doing there. So that Northwest Partnership Agreement, all goods and services over 75,000 have to be publicly posted. Construction at 200,000. So we're trying to align our policy with the trade treaty thresholds. That's the thing behind those numbers. And they do break out construction for whatever reason as a separate type of procurement, so.
When, in the policy under the preferred vendor list, it says the request for qualifications can be employed when establishing a preferred vendor list. And it said, requests for qualifications must be performed annually. And is that a requirement of the trade treaties? Because I know I have bid into organizations where the qualification list lasted multiple years, not just one. And if we're trying to diversify our supplier base, it's a lot of work for small businesses to go through that qualification. I know as an independent consultant, it was always a lot of work to do that. So I wondered if we had to make it annual or whether there was some room there?
So it's the way it works. Karen, is the new Canada Free Trade Agreement, it had some new language in that agreement. It's only been in effect for a couple of years. What the requirement actually is, is that you post the opportunity once a year, or it has to be posted once a year. But those who are currently on the list or the lists don't need to rebid every year. They can stay on the list. It's just an opportunity for new entrants of the market to get on the list. So that's the trade agreement requirement is that we post the notice once a year. Those who are on the list can stay on and those who have been barred or poor performers can be, you know, disbarred from bidding on it again. But it's a great way of letting new entries to the market get in on procurement activities.
Excellent. Okay, my last question, Chair. All the way throughout the report and the policy, it talks about established criteria. And in the best practice document that you also included with this, it talks about engaging people to understand what the goals are and what. So how are we going to establish our criteria for our strategic or social procurement? Is council involved in that? Does our community get involved in that? Is that a staff effort? Like where do we do that?
So that's part of what we want to do with the working group is, I mean, one of the easiest things to do in procurement is establish what our rate of criteria are. They're always going to be different depending on the procurement we're doing. You're never going to have a set standard, 30% this, 20% that, 5% this. But, you know, if and where it makes sense, you want to have a criteria established. And you want to, you're actually required to put that in your bid documents so that a bidder knows how you're actually going to be evaluating them. So as part of the working group, we want to go through, if you look at that bi-social document, there's some worksheets in there. And we're going to work through with council, with, you know, the supplier community, with staff on, you know, what's important to us. And then developing criteria around what the feedback is through that process. So it can be quite involved. Like it's the best way of doing like a strategic or social procurement. This is where the rubber meets the road, right? This is how we're going to evaluate suppliers and select suppliers. And it's really driven by, you know, council direction, council policy, right? Staff are just implementing those desires and wishes and plans.
So there'll be another conversation about setting those high-level goals for our procurement process and then a discussion around criteria.
Yeah, so the criteria is really, so what we are seeing today is the policy piece, but we've got a big procedure piece that we need to do. Most of that's done around procurement, but not the social procurement piece. But that's the one thing we need to develop in our procedural document.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. See, the Chair, I think the mayor may have just hijacked my question in terms of criteria. But I was curious, because they weren't defined here, appreciate that there's not a conversation coming. But as there is expected to be some variability on how those criteria are weighted, would it be part of the conversation to establish what perhaps like a minimum weight might be for a certain criteria versus others?
That's an excellent comment, Jenna. Basically, what we want to do through that process is we do want to establish minimum, maximum around the rate of criteria. And I mean, part of the tactical side of procurement is you don't want to fix things down on every procurement, right? What we do in a consulting, engineering consulting world is going to be different on the mattress recycling example I showcased there. So we want to have that flexibility, but we want to have some guidelines around how we do our evaluations and scoring. One of the kind of benchmarks for me is pricing. We always never want to make less than 20%. That's kind of a best practice, I guess is the word for it. But other criteria, like especially with the GHG missions, have been really pushing for 10, at least 10% on all our procurements that we can make. That can be the difference between getting the job and not getting the job, even on something like cell phones. So that's, yeah, again, a further conversation we need to have to solidify how we want that to look.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then I suspect that this will also come in the subsequent conversation, but I had a question around how we then establish measuring the outcomes of this work. And I suspect that once we go through the conversation of criteria, then we measure outcomes. And I'm getting ahead of myself, but I just wanted to.
That's exactly, that's big on our mind is we want to, we want it to be more than just nice words on paper. We want to measure outcomes. We want to, you know, be able to come back and demonstrate this is how we rolled it out. These are the criteria we used and these are the key performance indicators that come back saying we are meeting our targets.
I will just say there was an element in that bi-social Canada document that stood out to me in terms of when we do get to that conversation, trying to keep it very clear in terms of measuring outcomes and not necessarily impact in order to actually make that feasible. So I just want, when we get to that conversation, to hold that component in our minds because I think otherwise we can get really bogged down in how we measure impact, which is not actually what we're trying to do here.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner. I've got Counselor Race, followed by Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Two questions. One is the definition of social enterprise is an organization that reinvests 51% or more of its profits to some social issue. How do we, how do we enforce that? How do we know that's exactly what they're doing? I mean, in the process then, do we somehow require them to produce financial statements or some kind of a, some kind of an audit?
That is something that we could do potentially, is we could do an audit. But also a lot of the certification bodies are out there that can certify these social enterprises, that they are reinvesting 51% of their profits or whatever back into a social outcome, like an economic or, you know, environmental or whatever, you know, enterprise. So that's something, again, that's a further conversation and something we need to brush out. If we're going to go down the social enterprise route is. If we're going to go down the social enterprise route is how we check up on that, you know? How do we, you know, report back on that? Make sure that we are dealing with a special enterprise.
Well, and the fact that there are certification bodies really is sort of part of my question, I guess. And there are things out there that can assist us with that. We don't have to do that kind of work ourselves necessarily. Second point.
Exactly.
The second point is is in the policy, what is note about a preference, all else being equal, preference to a local business or social enterprise. And, and this discussion seems to, in my experience, come up about once a term when, when people talk about we should be giving preference to local contractors, for example. And, and we talk about it a little bit and then we seem to always end up in the spot where our duty is really to the taxpayer to get the best value for the dollar. And, and if we start giving preference to local contractors and out of town contractors won't bid on projects, for example, and then local prices seem to go up. And is that the best way to do it? And so we've, there's never been a formal policy to my knowledge, but we've always said, no, we're not going to give preference to local contractors. So with this policy, I know it's draft, but do you see that problem arising? If, if there is all else being equal, preference to local contractors, might we discourage some out of town contractors from bidding on some of these projects where we want that competition?
Yeah, that, that's an excellent point and I'm glad you brought it up. Because the, the points basically did it at the trade treaty threshold. So this, this local preference wouldn't apply to anything over 200,000 for construction or 75 for goods and services. I mean, that's something we have in Squamish. We we don't have enough competition in a lot of the situations. So we do want to keep encouraging that as, as much as we can. I mean, what we're really doing here is if everything else is equal, we've got an in-town supplier, out of town supplier, everything's equal, tiebreaker will be, well, and we can bring in the local preference piece.
And are things ever exactly equal? Or is there some kind of leeway, like a two or three percent or something like that where you can say, okay, we can, we can exercise that kind of bias?
It, it does happen. It happens occasionally, not, not a lot. Doug, and usually it's, it's two or three points is not going to be enough usually. I mean, sometimes on engineering consultancy services, we get, you know, we've had one recently where we had like eight bidders bid on it and probably six of them could have done the work, you know? So that only tiebreaker that we were using really in those situations is price, right? So when, when, in situations like that, that's kind of when we can bring in a tiebreaker like that. They do happen and that's, it's worth noting that, you know, I, I mean, why wouldn't we give ourselves the flexibility to choose a local supplier if they're just as good as an out of tanner?
But the answer, I guess, to the original question then is if it's over $200,000, I think you said, by treaty, we are not permitted to give that preference?
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mary, I saw you read it, was it on this topic or for later on the list? Okay, thank you. Counselor Anderson.
I'm wondering whether consideration has been given or whether policy attention might be given to how we can structure a contract work package to either facilitate or encourage competition or to benefit local firms. And I'll give two illustrations. We have had, or the district has over the years, had situations where there was only one bidder for a fairly large contract. And the discussion might arise as to whether the contract might have been structured differently or broken apart. Another scenario was, I'll just throw out an example of a gravel operation. The district might develop where some land needs to be cleared. First of all, attention to splitting up that contract so that maybe a local firm or a local nonprofit group or something can do some land clearing in that, these types of scenarios. So my question is, that issue of structuring contracts to foster our goals, is that given attention in our, in our policy work?
Yes, it is. Basically, that's more of a procedural thing. So what you're talking about, like for instance, what we've done with the fire hole by not going your traditional design and then put it out to bid for a GC to bid on the whole package. With the CM at risk that we did on the fire hole, we were able to take that $16 million worth of work, basically, and break it up into smaller packages. So Tofino did something very similar with the street skate project that they had. That was a $1.2 billion street skate project they did in Tofino. And what they did to give the local contractors an opportunity to actually bid on the work is they broke it up into smaller packages. And that's all about a project delivery model. So my, my preference wherever possible is to do it by those kind of procurement models or project delivery models so that, you know, you're getting the more, a lot of times you get better pricing too, right? If you break the packages up into smaller packages. I mean, this is really what a GC would do. And then he'd throw his 10% or she would throw a 10% on top of the, whatever contract price they got from herself. So we're, we're kind of taking that away from them and, and we're going directly to market. So that those kinds of considerations are more in a procedural procurement planning type situation. And that, and that's something we're trying to do at the district. We're trying to do a lot more around procurement planning. Because it's very important, like if you do the planning, you get a better outcome when you go to market via procurement. And then you get a better contract and you get a better deal. And then you get a better fire.
Thank you. I did have another question. The district is involved in a joint venture partnership with the Squamish Nation in the Squamish Community Forest. I take it that that community forest entity is exempt from this policy work. And unless it chooses otherwise, I should also add that the management plan does address procurement goals, contracting goals. But I take it that it would be exempt and so might other entities. I'll throw another, the Squamish Sustainability Corp. is a wholly owned, wholly owned corporation of the district.
They, they would be exempt. So a lot of the exemptions in the trade treaties, what you're talking about, they're covered under the trade treaties, like working with the Squamish Nation, they're exempt from the trade treaties. Nonprofits exempt from the trade treaties. So we have a lot of opportunity in those spaces to do something in the procurement space.
Thank you. That's interesting. Chair, I did have one more question, but I can, you can come back to me later if you wish.
No, go ahead, Counselor.
The Chamber of Commerce often gets requests from housing development applicants, development applicants to, for letters of support. And so about two years ago, it implemented a policy whereby it was going to encourage these developers seeking letters of support to have a local purchasing policy. It wasn't a, an insistence, but it was simply really to encourage development firms to consider this and to produce one if they hadn't already. And this in fact had some interesting results. Some firms already have them in place, but others took this as an opportunity to develop one. And, you know, in, in just maintaining good relations with the community of Squamish. So my question is, is this of interest for the district, given our constraints with treaties and so on? And given the fact that this is all evolving, it's an evolving world and many businesses are catching up or looking ahead, is it of interest simply to inquire whether a bidder has a given policy? And if they do, to request a copy? And that in, in the, with the purpose of foster encouraging development to policy on the part of the business community?
Excellent, excellent point, Eric. Basically, we're, we're doing that at the moment through a lot of our procurements. We are asking, especially as it aligns to environmental or, you know, GHGs, we're asking about their company policies, wanting to see a copy of the policy. Also, as part of our social procurement initiative, you know, working with Kate and Alicia at Economic Development, we want to engage the supplier community around this and maybe showcase what we're doing. And maybe they could, you know, pail in and they'll pail in with us on developing their own policies around the same kind of issues and situations. So it is definitely of interest the way we're going.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Peddignall, then I've got myself on the list and then over to Mayor Elliott. And Counselor French is in the mix there somewhere too. I'll figure it out. Counselor Peddignall?
Yeah, thank you. And I was also very excited to see this on our agenda and I think my colleagues have answered or asked and got some of my questions answered. I did want to touch on a number of things. One, my understanding is that part of the intent of this is that within the bounds of the trade agreement, it is to shift our focus away from lowest cost as the primary decider. And so while we may not give preference or may not be able to give preference to a local company when it's over $200,000, we may prefer a company providing the most local benefit. And there's a slight variation, but that is the sort of thing we are talking about possibly as we establish our criteria. Is that correct?
Nailed it, Chris. That's basically what we're talking about. So the trade treaties are pretty explicit on not being able to discriminate based on locality. But you can, through your procurements, ask for that local benefit, right? That, that is not, that's, that's a, that's allowed under the trade treaties. And I mean, why wouldn't we do that? We, we want local benefit, right?
Okay, thank you. And this is a comment, article or item 2.11. It mentions equity seeking and I was at a couple of work groups recently and it was mentioned that the, I know we always struggle with language, but that equity deserving is a preferred term nowadays. And I guess the thinking is equity seeking presumes that the groups you're speaking about are somehow disadvantaged. Whereas I think the idea is to identify groups that have historically had challenges, but not to assume they are still lacking anything, but still to, you know, identify they are deserving of equity and making sure we're paying attention. And so just a, a comment there. In the doc, oh, actually, I guess, you know, maybe this is a question to put off to our criteria discussion, but just one thing I'll raise. I saw some implication that there might be custom criteria or some customization in criteria for each sort of project. I guess in the back of my mind, I wondered though, if there's a way to have a standardized criteria? And, and, you know, I'm thinking some criteria or a lot of it might be somewhat subjective, but if there's a one to five scale on several domains, you know, I guess in the back of my mind, at the end of the year, I could look at sort of, we could aggregate those because they're using a common system and say, we've really moved the ball far on climate action and not so far on social justice. And we've really fallen behind on economic development. And, and I guess a concern that when we're doing criteria, the more we customize it, the harder it will be to sort of understand where we're, where we've gotten to at the end of the year. So I don't know if you have any comments or thoughts about that?
Yeah, I, I have a few. Basically, there's usually four or five key categories that you'd have in most procurements. I mean, there's always the experience and qualifications. There's the price. You know, often there's work plan, you know, or innovation value add. They're, they're kind of the pre-criteria. So most things would fall under that. And then what you're customizing per procurement is more like subset categories or percentages associated with each criteria, right? So on that mattress recycling one that I showcased, there's 30% of that one. You know, 15% was social benefit, 15% was environmental. So it still falls within those kind of main four or five criteria we use and you see on most procurements. It's just that the customizing or the scaling comes into the subsets of those categories. But we could still report back on the major categories. And if we did do something a bit different on some procurements, we could highlight those as well.
Okay, thank you. And Chair, I'll rely on you to cut me off when I'm going on too long.
Okay, one, one more right now and I feel like we're going to have a couple laps around the table here, so.
Okay. Thank you. When I was looking at the background documents, it, it did speak to doing what you can to remove obstacles in your procurement process to, you know, in our context, where it's like helping hands or seat of sky community services. And I'm wondering at what point do we look at, at that piece? So it's, it's not so much, I guess maybe in some ways it gets to some of the questions the mayor was asking about. But instead of a single consultant, how do we make it really easy for social enterprise that we might want to help or facilitate? Make it really easy for them to engage in our procurement, procurement processes?
That's, that's, that's actually an excellent point. That's part of what we need to do in educating our supplier base, you know, educating social enterprises on how they go about bidding on opportunities with the district. What we have to do under the trade treaties quite often is we have to provide B briefs to unsuccessful proponents who bid on our work. And that is, it's actually a good opportunity to have those conversations about how you can do better next time, right? When you bid on our work with us. So we might want to start thinking about throughout economic development, friends, maybe having a few workshops with, you know, local social enterprises, nonprofits on how they engage with the district on bidding on work that we have or opportunities that we have for the forthcoming.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll come, we'll come back around, Counselor Peddignall. So actually, Counselor French, and then I've got myself on the list and then Mayor Elliott.
Thank you. One of the recommendations in the presentations plus report was implement and manage a purchasing card program. And I, I've taken it from the rest of the documentation that that's not in place. Or, or maybe it is. So maybe you could just clarify whether we have a P card system in place or not?
I was actually going to touch on that a bit today. We, we do have it in the works. It's something we've wanted to do for a long time, actually since that report come out. You'll find that most local governments have some kind of P card program in place. And there's a lot of synergies and efficiencies with having a P card program. We have actually signed up through the provincial MasterCard program. And that program basically give us a 2% kickback on all spend. But we just haven't gotten to the point where we, we have enough capacity to implement it. Heather and I have been talking and the rest of the fires talking, maybe Q1 next year or Q2 next year. Because they, implementing P cards kind of goes with implementing the procurement module in UBW as well, having those purchase orders. So again, that's another oversight controls tool that, especially on the low dollar stuff, we, we're not seeing as much as we could if we had a robust P code program in place. So it's on the plan, it's on the works. It's just a staffing issue at the moment, not having enough capacity to implement them.
Okay. And similar to that is the fleet card program. And it, and it looks like maybe that will eventually be on its way out as we move towards electric vehicles more and more. But I seem to recall from previous discussions that there are a few fleet cards within the district. Is that going to be expanded? Or can you just tell us a little bit about fleet cards as well?
So fleet, the fleet stuff that was in that report, we have actually just signed up with RMA, which are like a joint procurement buying group. And they do have some, some fleet stuff in there that we're currently looking at. I've been looking at that with Pete and Bob down at the yard. Again, it's just one of those things we haven't got to yet. That's something we want to try and tackle next year. Because there's a lot of space where we can save some money there if we can get moving on it.
Chair, I've got one more if you'll humor me.
Yeah, go ahead, Coach.
Have system contracts being drafted and are they being managed?
System contracts?
Yeah, this, this was referred to in the presentations plus report as well as one of the recommendations.
I'm not sure about that section. I'd have to go back and have a look at it to see what I was.
Okay.
If, if, if you're talking about standardized contracts that we're using or corporate supplier arrangements, then we do look at those, the corporate supplier arrangements with the province. We can join on with similar to RMA. And we do have and have implemented standardized tendering templates and contract documents that we use. But we have some done some standardization around that. But there is a lot of room still for us for those corporate, like office supplies and office furniture, that kind of thing, that we can do some more in. So we, again, that's something we hope to tackle next year. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions I'll pose now. With the delegated authority, I appreciate the expansion there. How are the dollar amounts chosen? It seemed a blanket doubling of our current policy across the board. It doesn't seem very nuanced to me to be, that to be magically how it bounces. But can you speak to how we arrived at those and, and maybe best practices elsewhere?
Yeah. So basically, we took what the consultant recommended. And the consultant, Rusty and Larry, had done a very similar report to North Caochon. So we looked at that. I've looked at them, a couple of policies I've developed with the Caochon Valley Regional District, with Cariboo Regional District. They kind of align more with the policies I've developed and what my colleagues in the BC Municipal Managers Purchasing Group, the tools that we have in that group. So that's pretty much all the munis represented in that group across BC. You know, we've got kind of a gauge of what everybody's doing elsewhere. It wasn't just so much a doubling of everything. It may appear that way. It's just more what's an appropriate authority level. So that's kind of the thinking that we had going into that.
Okay. And then the output. Okay, and then the output just happened to be a doubling of everything, which is that's 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 fine. I understand we're gonna have a, it sounds like we're gonna have a future discussion around the KPIs of particularly around the social procurement. But what is the, I didn't see any reporting. Language in here. So like, how how often do we check in on this and check in on these on these KPIs? And is that something that we should be discussing at this point? Or are you or is the thought process of staff that those KPIs? During that discussion, we would check in on the frequency, we would discuss the frequency of the reporting. At that point?
So our our thinking, Aman, is to, we wanna tie it into the quarterly reporting that finances started doing. We wanna tie in our procurement activities in as part of that. The KPI discussion, we probably wouldn't be in a position to report out on that until, you know, twelve months. Would be an ideal number for that. And then we could probably, once we've got like a baseline, we've established over the twelve months, we could incorporate in that into the quarterly reporting the plans companies started doing.
Okay, um, thank you. I've got Mayor Elliott, and then we're gonna go back to Counselor Penningill and then Counselor Stoner. I saw your head. So Mayor Elliott.
Thanks. I could talk about this all day. So. One question I have is how do we educate or alert our more regular suppliers that we're heading in this direction? So how do we bring them along with us versus them saying, well, I'm not bidding on any of their projects anymore?
That's that's an excellent point. So basically, the first way a lot of them will see it is in our procurement documents that we post. They'll see the evaluated criteria. Some of them aren't used to responding that way, so there will be. Opportunities for them to reach out to us and have those conversations. Like going back to our education piece again, like I'm hoping my friends in economic development can assist with. Letting the supplier community, especially in Squamish, know how and what to bid on and, you know, the the best ways of responding to these opportunities. So they're gonna see it straight away on our procurement documents, but it's also something that we should consider putting on our website as well. You know, this is our social procurement pieces, our evaluating criteria. This is how you wanna respond. If you want more information, contact us. You know, come and speak to us and we'll kind of walk you through it. I mean, that that's a big part of the job Karen always has been is that education piece, educating suppliers, educating staff on how to evaluate submissions, you know, counsel.
Yeah, and I'm also thinking about, you know, if we want, really wanna push the the boundaries on. On let's say. Carbon. Carbon neutral fuels or less carbon intensive fuels during construction projects. You actually would have to give suppliers time to think about how they would do that. And so. It's not like we can just drop that into a procurement document for our construction projects in 2021. It would be a discussion. And like, how long would it take you to access that kind of fuel? What does that do to your costs? Like we would, it's a two-way conversation, I think, that that balancing of the the equation.
Yeah, it it's it really is a two-way conversation. And the way we started often is in our procurement documents. So basically. A lot of what we're doing at the moment, Karen, is really around what are you doing in this space or what can you do, you know? And if you have any innovative new ideas, we wanna evaluate that and we wanna score you on that. We wanna give you an opportunity to present that to us. And you're totally right, like it's it's not something as you probably have done is. You've got two weeks to respond to an opportunity. You might not be able to do it in two weeks, right? You need more of a heads up that this is the direction we're going, and and this is the messaging that we we need to get out there.
Right, um, can we in our reporting?
Mayor, I'll stop you. There is, I just had a signal from Ms. Glende. She's wondering if economic development would like to speak to that. To that particular point before we move on. Sorry to catch you off.
Hi, sorry. Hi, thank you. Just to support Anthony with respect to answering that. Economic Development has been working closely with Anthony and other departments within the district on the social procurement aspect especially. And we are working towards, once the policy is developed, working towards a toolkit for our local businesses. Often you'll see different, the provinces and also the federal government have dedicated resources on how to sell to government. So we would also be creating those types of resources for our local business community, which could be applied across a broader spectrum of suppliers. Outside of our community as well. So I just wanted to reinforce that this is within our planning as we move forward with this policy with.
Thank you. Okay, so when I think about reporting and those quarterly sort of incorporating purchasing into the quarterly variance reports. It will it be possible to tell council, you know, here's a number of of. Successful bids we closed this quarter. Here's how many actually won because. They had a higher bar on the strategic procurement. Like, can we, is that gonna be easy for you to pick out? Like, I would like to know how many. Folks are actually winning because they met a higher bar.
Excellent point, Karen. Basically, that that is reporting we should be doing and we can do. Most reporting that I've done in procurement world is usually staff reports to approvers. And that's usually one of the things I wanna look at is the evaluated criteria and where everyone fell in those scoring matrices and who won because of what reason, right? So that's not that difficult, the reporting to do. I mean, we do have that information somewhat at the moment. We don't have it all in bids and tenders yet, our digital procurement platform. But once that information is in there and we're doing our evaluations in there, it'll be really easy to report out on.
Okay.
And it's useful, useful.
Yeah, it's useful to know. And then I think this is my last question. Is there strength regionally? So, you know, we're going to move in this direction, but would it be better if the SLRD moved in this direction? And Whistler moved in this direction and Pemberton moved in this direction so that. That people can't sort of municipality hop like, oh, it's getting too hard. Look at the bar that Squamish has set. Well, we can just go work in in Whistler. And so is there an advantage to trying to to get this type of policy approved regionally?
I I would tend to agree there is advantage to doing that. You know, we've talked about in the past that coastal community social procurement initiative is probably the best model for us, Karen. Because it's it's smaller communities like Squamish, you know, all across Vancouver Island and up the coast, the Sunshine Coast there. All moving together in the this social procurement space, but they're all kind of scaling it to what works for them and their communities. So broadly speaking, they're all going in the same policy direction, same kind of procedural direction, the same kind of big documents that they're putting out. So that there's kind of a a loose alliance, I guess, is what you could say. And I know through my network in the lower mainland, there's a lot of the big players obviously already way ahead on this, like the city of Vancouver, North Vancouver. All updating their policies around social procurement. You know, they've all got different agendas, but it's pretty much the same overarching. Deal and and push for it. Like, I think there'd be a lot of appetite in Whistler and at the regional district level. And it's something that I think we should pursue or somebody should push for. Would have value.
Thanks. Now I know what my update will be at the SLRD meeting this week. Appreciate it very much. Thanks.
Moving on to Counselor Penningill, then I've got Stoner and Race to follow.
Thank you. My first item is maybe a comment or a question, not to answer here, but to think about in the future. As I, you know, read through this, I I know we're thinking about some of these same aspects in terms of our long-term management plans. And rezonings and and we try to get at some of these things with our priority rezoning criteria and CACs and so on. But I guess in the back of my mind is is how do we bring the same criteria and thought process sort of throughout? And and so earlier in a, for example, a big dyke project, how do we, you know, not just engineer the dyke, but think about how these engineering decisions. Effect all these things we're trying to address, you know, local procurement and and local benefit and those sorts of things. And so, yeah, I just started getting really excited with a lot of the ideas here and wondering, how how can we do this everywhere? On a on a more micro level, the consultant's report from 2018. Did highlight a concern that in some cases, purchase orders were being filled out after the fact in response to invoice amounts. And I think item or article ten point four in the policy is meant to deal with that, but. The language is a bit unclear to me, and I just wanna make sure or check is, are we addressing that? And is the expectation that, you know, as soon as you sign a contract, that's when the purchase order is finalized. It's locked in before any services are provided. And then in the future, you know, the invoice and all that will come down the road. And then we'll have to reconcile, you know, after the fact. And so that consultant concern is addressed.
Yeah, that 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 is a good point. And that's what we're trying to address through implementing that human module within UBW. It's basically to address that kind of issue because you should have a contract or a purchase order in place before any invoice comes. It shouldn't happen after the fact. Ideally, you'd want it to happen that way. So, you know, the authorization to procure a good or service. Has already happened before an invoice arrives. And then there's really not a lot of point in doing an invoice after. Doing a purchase order after invoice comes in, you know, and that's something we will hope to report through on. The reporting mechanism we've set it up with the financial quarterly reporting. So we wanna. Have the the tools now, and we're getting the tools, and we've got the tools and implementing those tools so that we. Can see that kind of activity and ensure it's not happening. You know, it's a compliance issue that. Should be addressed through having the right tools in place.
Okay, and so if I read ten point four, does that clearly to someone who understands this terminology sort of state? That fact that that's part of the policy or? Is that a piece that we're leaving to UBW as opposed to in including in our policy?
So that that point on ten point four, I just, what the goal was, was to put enough in the policy, but not too much. Because a lot of that is really around procedural issues and how we do it with deal with it in a procedure. I do have a procedure documented around that. Didn't really wanna put too much of that into a policy. So if you read the consultant's report, they kind of recommended a lot of stuff come out of the current policy. And and be put in like a procedure manual.
Okay, all right. And then, thank you. Finally. I mean, like I said, this is all very exciting. I just wanna get moving yesterday on it. And I understand that there are some things still to discuss and so on. So. Are there pieces of this we can kind of roll out now, once we approve this policy and refine the criteria later? Or, you know, or what's the timeline? Do we need another year of discussion before we're ready to start rolling? Or what are we thinking on this?
We've already got some momentum now. We are putting those those criteria in some of our procurements. We've got a great opportunity coming up with the new fire hall and the new public works building to incorporate a lot of this stuff in there as soon as we kind of get policy approval around it. Developing a procedure on the how-tos and the the criteria, we we're hoping like get in the next two, three months, really cracking on that. Be at a point where we're ready to roll stuff out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penningill. Counselor Stoner, followed by Counselor Race. And then we're gonna need to start working towards the conclusion of this one, everybody. Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, just a quick point of clarification on Counselor Penningill's question. My understanding is that ten point four was removed from the current version of the policy. Is that correct? There's two, because you put, you included both the current, like the existing policy and then the draft new policy in our council package. And as I read it, in the new policy, ten point four is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's no ten point four on the new one.
Just wanted to clarify that. All right. And so my question was, and this is another clarification point, I just wanna, I heard you say, I think, Mr. Jeffrey, that. Through the next iteration of conversations where we talked about the criteria development, there will be an opportunity to engage suppliers. For some suppliers in that conversation. Is that correct?
Yeah, that that there will be an opportunity to engage some suppliers in that conversation. So some some of the suppliers are already doing this and other. When they're bidding on jobs in the lower mainland or, you know, on the island and stuff. So some of them will be aware of what we're trying to achieve through this space. Or they've been on provincial or federal government jobs. So we do wanna engage that the supply community and get their input back on it as well.
Great. So I do think that there is a lot of knowledge that can be tapped there. And we wanna include that in that conversation, certainly. And then my second point was just billing off of a question that Mayor Elliott had in terms of the potential for regional leverage here. I'm just curious if any, if you know of any of our neighboring communities are involved in that provincial. Procurement manager working group that you're involved in. Do we know if we have any momentum there already? Or can you consider this kind of being a big lift to get our neighbors on board?
I know there's nobody in the Cedar Sky other than myself that's in that purchasing managers group. There's there's no other purchasing manager basically in the four local governments within the Cedar Sky corridor. Thank you. And I can't really speak to the momentum the other, I mean. Whoever's sitting on the regional district would probably have a better idea of that than I would.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner. Counselor Race?
Thank you. So I'm still a little bit concerned about this this preference and how decisions might be made around it. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you heard an answer to another question that. Consideration of. Community values and so forth might be given different weights on different types of projects. Very often, when we see these these bids come to council for approval. Staff have made the decision by way of a ma- matrix. And so I'm just curious how this might work. Does that mean, for example, in one particular project, community values, for lack of a better term, might be given ten points? And then another type of project that might be given thirty points. And then do you tell? The public or the contractors or suppliers beforehand that this is the matrix and this is how we're going to make the decision? How would that actually actually work?
So when you put out your bid documents, you have to include, according to the trade treaties. Your selection criteria or your rated criteria and and how you are gonna assign points in each criteria. So that has to be spelled out in the bid document. And if there is gonna be a little, you know, if everything else is equal, then, you know, we'll give preference to local suppliers. So that that information is supposed to be supplied all upfront in the bid document.
But if everything else is equal, then in that that last line in the matrix theoretically. Doesn't come into play unless everything else is equal. So if everybody is sort of the, their their bid is evaluated based on. Price and so forth, and it's not equal, you wouldn't even get to that particular item on the matrix. So it's actually, it's a matrix plus a line almost. Would that be correct?
I, yeah, basically, yes. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, council, any other final comments? We do have a. We do have a staff recommendation. Here and we've had good discussion around it. Counselor Race, do you wanna start us off with final comments?
Yeah, this is the comment part?
Yeah, I think.
As a matter of giving staff feedback, which I think is the goal. I I am generally supportive of this. My question, you probably realized, have I have some concerns about how this might actually be applied. I think we have to always have to remember, and I'm basing this also on previous conversations with different councils, as I said. That, you know, it's not like we're Van City who can go on behalf of their shareholders and and make decisions to support this and not that. The big difference is, in my mind, is that we tax for this money. And when we tax for this money, I think we have to be very careful about what other things we introduce into the purchasing mix. And so, as I say, in previous discussions, we've ended up at the point. That our duty as counselors was to get the best deal possible for our taxpayers. I recognize that that can include our taxpayers. I recognize that that can include our taxpayers, of course, our members of our community, and that can include some layer of community values being put into this. But I think us and future councils would have to be very cautious about that to ensure that they're broadly held community values. Otherwise, it could just blow up in our face and also not properly serve all of the taxpayers of the community. So I'll leave it at that. I know it's a very, becomes at some point quite subjective, which is always a little bit dangerous in these things. But I'll leave it at that point for feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Elliott?
Thank you. So I don't think I had any major changes to suggest to the policy that's in front of us, except for maybe the clarification around the living wage definition. And just making sure that we define that asterisk beside the CAO's name. But I have a slightly different interpretation than, than my colleague with respect. And, and I actually think that purchasing is not subjective. Purchasing is about establishing a fair process for all bidders and being quite transparent about how you become successful on a bid and how you're not. And I think that it is, it is this time where we need to better define what value means for our community and it's not necessarily the lowest cost when there are other benefits to be gained through what we purchase. So I think that we can find that right balance and, and through the, the money that we spend each year, have a greater impact, greater positive impact, not only for the taxpayer in their pocketbook, but, but also more generally seeing more people earning a living wage, seeing more people winning contracts that are, that are local and furthering our other goals. And I think when your purchasing can do that, it's, it's much better than just reducing everything to a dollars and cents line. So I don't think strategic procurement in any way abandons the idea of value for money. I think it actually deepens, deepens our understanding of what it is. So thank you. I look forward to the work in 2021.
Thank you, Councilor Stoner, followed by Councilor French.
Thank you. Through the chair, I too don't have any major changes to make to the draft policy that was presented. I think today's conversation illuminated what the next steps will be in terms of setting those criteria that will be driven by the work group and there'll be opportunity for feedback through that process and what the minimum, maximum weighted components of those criteria might be. I think that'll be the, the stickier part of the conversation, but I do look forward to that conversation in the new year. I too am extremely excited to see this come forward to council. I, I agree with the mayor that this is about shifting the way that we define value and starting to signal down the supply chain that it's not just an economic line, but there are other things that our community is looking for in terms of value. And we are not the first ones to move in this direction. I'm very happy to hear that there are other communities that we can, that we are, we're drawing from and that there's an opportunity to share this more broadly as well through the, through the corridor and the region. So I see great opportunity here and I look forward to the discussions as they move forward.
Thank you, Councilor French, followed by Councilor Penningill.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I support the policy direction in front of us and my, my one and only thought and comment moving forward is what can we do to move, move it faster? I feel like we're behind schedule on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor French. Councilor Penningill? Nope, you're on mute, Councilor Penningill.
Thank you. I, I support this, this policy and as I said, quite excited about it. I, I would suggest that council have a look and consider using the equity deserving term rather than equity seeking. And then I just want to, you know, I think arguably evaluating projects mostly or primarily on, you know, lowest cost is, is objective, but I think what we've seen is that it's not equitable. It doesn't, at the end of the day, provide a cost-effective means to meet the majority of the community's needs. It tends to, to serve a very small subgroup of the community. And so I think what we're doing here is trying to find more cost-effective ways of serving a larger portion of the community, increasing general community benefit for our dollars, which I think is a good thing. It, it can get a bit messy and, you know, we may on an ongoing basis need to have conversations about what the criteria are and as community needs and value shift, the criteria may shift. But I think in general, this is a better way to head despite it being a bit messy at times. And yeah, very excited about this. So thank you, staff.
Thank you, Councilor Penningill. So I, I feel this is a, I, I really, really like this, this direction. I appreciate the redefining of, of best value in, through this process. And, and I also think it's important to communicate as we move further in this direction, what, what impacts are intended with the policy? And also, to me, it's not in, in any way an abandonment of cost consideration. And I really appreciate how it will be implemented with a clear listing of, of what, of, of which part of the equation is, is weighted and in which, in which way. And, and I hope that that addresses some of Councilor Race's concerns around, around pricing and responsibility to the taxpayer from a purely financial standpoint. And, and I recognize this isn't an abandonment of that in, in any way. It's just, it's just, it's just further refining and redefining what that end value is for, for our spend. So I appreciate that. I don't see any major changes I would like to see made beyond further defining when the reporting periods are and how this is rolled out and communicated to our, our business community so they, they know how to, they will be expected to interact with us in our bidding process going forward. Okay, counsel? So staffs indicated they've got, you have a, sorry, a different unamended recommendation?
I have some bullet points.
Okay, can we put that up? So staff's accumulated some bullet points to add to the, to the motion, to the motion, sorry. So I will, we're just getting rejigged here so we can.
I added two bullet points under the as follows. One is a better definition of a living wage. And the second bullet point is capturing the balance between social procurement versus procuring based on best price and value for the taxpayer.
Does anyone feel their specific feedback wasn't captured in those, in that boiled down? Yeah, Councilor Race, go ahead.
Could you just repeat the second one, please?
Yeah, I couldn't hear it very well.
Okay, we're, sorry, we're working on our, our, our technical capacity.
The second bullet point is capturing the balance between social procurement versus procuring based on best price and value for taxpayers.
Go ahead, Mayor Elliott.
I'm not sure why we need the second one because the whole policy is about doing just that.
Yeah, I see that as a communication piece myself. I don't know how everyone else feels that particular piece. To me, that's, so let's, let's go with just that first bullet point if everyone's okay with that. Councilor Penningill?
Yeah, I did hear a couple of comments about clarifying an asterisk, which I didn't hear mentioned there.
I'm getting a, I'm getting a nod.
And I did try about a, a language piece a couple of times. I don't know if I'm just alone on that or other people would like to see that as well.
I, I saw some head, some head nods on, on that one. So I don't think you're alone in that one, Councilor Penningill. So that was the language around the, one more time, Councilor Penningill with the, the language around deserving of equity.
Equity deserving rather than seeking.
Yeah, so language change wherever it appears, if it's more than one place. So we've added those two bullet points. So with that in mind, would someone like to move? Moved by Mayor Elliott, seconded by Councilor Stoner. Any further comments on this one before I call the question? Okay, with that, I'll pose a question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, counsel. One minute behind schedule, so well, well done, everybody. That was a, a big topic. So next, next up, we've got in under correspondence, we've got action required. And this is a House Sound Community Forum from letter. And I believe Counselor Race was hoping to speak to this or take us through it.
Thank you, Chair. And I just, before I put the motion on the table, I just wanted to give you some background to this. And a lot of it was in the short report that was appended to the agenda. But this committee started about three and a half years ago and it arose from a discussion at the House Sound Forum sometime before that. And it was composed of and intended to be composed of an elected representative from each of the local governments in the House Sound area, as well as, those would be the members and as well as having, call them guests if you like, for lack of a better term, staff representatives and representatives of some NGOs. Forum started off with, the key goal was the Marine Reference Guide, which is going to be similar to the one that's in the Barclay Sound, Clay Quod Sound area, which if you're not familiar with it, is a series of different levels and a digital guide that allows you to lay on risks and sensitivities in a particular marine planning area. That was the focus for House Sound. There was other things that came up that were there. And over the last three and a half years, we first of all turned our efforts to the guide and that is now well underway. We managed to secure funding from different foundations and so forth, a little bit from local governments. And Sarah McJanet of our planning department has been sitting on the committee as a guest, more or less, and is also, in the Marine Reference Guide, we set up a certain management structure that did not include politicians. And she is on the, the directing group, if you like, that oversees the, that project. We tried to keep it unpolitical and, and more scientific. So going forward, as we, as we started to go through the last three and a half years and other things came up like sponge glass reefs and expanding the protection areas and derelict boats, composition of docking materials and so forth, there was a variety of different things and we realized that this was something that was really of value, not just for six months, which was the original intent, but to continue on. So we started to look for a home for it. The difficulty with having an ad hoc group like that is you're not a legal entity. You can't really have a bank account in the name of the group. You can't hire people. You can't sign a contract and there's a whole bunch of limitations. And so we considered different alternatives and the one we have come up with, as the report suggests, is to go under the umbrella of the highest sound biosphere region initiative society, which is working towards UN certification of this area as a biosphere reserve. Their board has, has agreed to that. So this resolution on the part of the municipality would just confirm that direction. In the report, there's a draft resolution, which also talks about appointing a council member. That's not before us at the moment. My understanding is that we will deal with that as a separate resolution when we appoint people to a variety of different committees. So going forward, all we're saying is yes, we agree that this group that we've been a part of for the last three and a half years can be sort of housed in the society to give it structure and allow it to have a bank account and all the things that incorporated structures will allow. So that's part of it, but I think it's important when we're doing this to sort of look at the bigger picture and that is, you know, as one of the communities in House Sound, bordering House Sound and in this area, I think we are a key stakeholder in the future of the sound and we have a key role to play in it. And so it is a commitment and, and part of the report talks about the possibility of future funding requests. There is nothing in this motion that commits us to that, but I think we should be prepared in the future, if these types of requests come through for specific projects, there is no budget for the committee at the moment, that we would consider that, consider that type of support. The only time that happened in the last three years was for the biosphere reserve. The local government contribution for a three-year project was set at $20,000 per year and that's all of the local governments in total. So we proportioned that based on population and Skomish's share came out to just under $5,000 of the 20, West Van was 10 and, and the others made up the other five. So going forward, there would probably be some allocation of that type, but we haven't got anything fixed in stone yet. But it's really just kind of in the back of your minds, hopefully have the idea that yeah, we are committed to being part of this House Sound Reserve and, and what happens in the sound certainly affects us and we have a role to play in its management. We've had Counselor Stoner sitting with the committee just for the last, well, since the start of this term, almost as a guest really, because there's really only one representative for a community. But she's been a great addition just because of her interest in the area and also because of her knowledge from her education and work experience. And so at the moment, that's the status of it, but we're talking about settling it into the society. That'll probably take another couple of months. There's a few directors' resolutions that have to come out of the society to get the thing properly constituted in the society and then it will go forward for whatever projects come up for it. It is a win-win for the society as well as the committee. The Biosphere Reserve Initiative Society is trying, of course, to get the UN certification, but Bennett's future is implementing programming and this committee and the work that it might do is part of that future. So it gives them one of their avenues going forward and that is the win for the society. And I'm happy to take any questions or if Councilor Stoner has a comment.
Counsel, any questions for Counselor Race? Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
I'm actually going to kind of make an observation in support of the recommendation, which has a number of parts. Let's add something. The recommendation refers to advancing identified recommended actions and there's a series of seven of them. I've had some purple involvement for some time and I think that something else that needs to be considered by us is to, to provide accountability. And I say that because we have been very fortunate in this whole House Sound enterprise and has a number of different aspects. We have some very individuals who have steered the course and done it very well so that we haven't heard about some issues that have come up, including for the House Sound Biosphere Region Initiatives, there are some conflicts with the LRMP, which the district is a signatory to. There's also some issues for our community force regarding buffer zones and issues of definitions that UNESCO has that don't exactly fit our plans. All of these things we haven't heard about and that's a good thing because they've been solved behind the scenes by individuals. And I'll refer to Ruth Simons, but also acknowledge Fiona Beatty. And another thing that, when I bring up accountability is that something that's happened between the two Ocean Watch reports is that we've lost some industry representatives that played strong roles earlier, Ian Ross from the Sunshine Coast. And the Ocean Watch 2020 edition did not address a lot of commercial transportation industries up because they didn't have those stakeholders as part of the process. They were, they were lost. So there's an issue of accountability there that we should all be mindful of and that this entity that will appoint people needs to be mindful of to keep it a success. And we need to, if you like, institutionalize what is being looked after by some very talented and skilled and individuals. So I'll leave it at that. I just wanted to add that, that, that there's some, there's a two-tiered structure and if, I'm not sure whether Counselor Race would want to add to this, there's a two-tiered structure. There's a two-tiered structure, leadership partners, which I take it is elected officials plus Squamish Nation. And the other tier is a steering committee, which is where our stakeholder representatives come into. So I guess I take it that that two-tier structure is what we're committing to and what we will evolve into. And I think that's a great idea. That's a good, good recipe for accountability.
You had a reply, Counselor Race?
Yep. So the resolution that is before us is the one that's on the agenda, not the one that's in the report, which is a little bit pared down from the report. Some of the issues you raise, I, I don't discount them. Those are Biosphere Society issues, and we don't govern the Biosphere Society. They have a separate board of directors who are not elected officials and, and quite separate from, from this particular committee. So this is a committee that has local government representation. And so the two-tier structure is, is not part of the committee. There is a structure to the Marine Reference Guide project, which is where Sarah McJanet exercises some oversight. And that is strictly put as sort of in a side closet, if you like, to keep the politicians away from it, to have it as scientific as possible and not political for credibility. It's supposed to be a planning tool. So, so I take the point, but that's what, going forward, this will be a series of elected officials on this particular committee, which will be the subcommittee of the society. But it will be sort of under the society's umbrella to allow us to, to enter into contracts, have bank accounts, et cetera, hire people if we choose to.
Thank you. Counselor Stoner? And then Counselor Anderson will come back to you.
Yeah, I think that differentiation is important. And I think ever since I did join as an observer to this committee, I think one of the challenges was, has always been kind of differentiating what all these different streams of work have been and where they interact. And I think the motion that will be before us aims to try and address some of that in terms of alignment of, of different work groups. And the way that I have come to think of the Ocean Watch Action Committee in some ways is almost like a task force or, or an implementation committee from the House Sound Community Forum. Where that is a, happens every two years, it is a discussion forum where the Ocean Watch Action Committee meets a little bit more regularly in between those forums and is really trying to implement the actions of the Ocean Watch, the, the Ocean Watch Report and trying to figure out where we can actually make some, some on-the-ground moves in, from that report in between the forums. So I don't know if that helps, but that's the way that I've been kind of untangling the different components in this space.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson, did you have a follow-up?
I don't really need to follow up with, I'll just say that our, I think we should all be vigilant that all of these various strands, and I forget the phrasing that Counselor Stoner used. There's all various things going on here in the House Sound activities. So integrated resource management is part of all of them. And as I look through the seven action items, I, I do see some, some slip, some, well, some potentials where if we're not mindful that people aren't at the table that should be, or people are busy and can't be there, we always need to be vigilant about this. And I, we noted earlier in our meetings today, a reference to a, a district initiative that was described in a manner that did not reflect integrated resource management. So that's just a theme that we must always be vigilant about. In order to look after the environment, we need to look after all the other two legs of the stool, if you like. And that's part of the accountability theme I was referring to. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Mayor Elliott?
I just wanted to let counsel know that the designation of the person to sit on the action group will come with all of our other recommendations. So that's why it's not part of this resolution, even though it was part of the, the part of our agenda. So that'll come, I think it's next week.
Thank you for that clarification. Counsel, can I get a mover for the? Are you moving that, Counselor Penningill? Seconded by Counselor Race. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, counsel. On schedule at four o'clock, can I get a motion to close? Thank you. Moved by Mayor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Stoner. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Motion carries. Okay, counsel, we'll, we don't have any time allotted to the shuffle over to the other platform. But let's take, let's take, let's take 10 minutes to switch platforms and get the, gather the people that we need for our closed agenda items. And we will see you there at 4:10. Thank you.